Portion of Hadley is. So in terms of starting the meeting in accordance with Master General Law, Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, signed by the Governor on February 15, 2022. I announced that this meeting of the Hadley Select Board is being recorded by Hadley Media, the Select Board's Office via Zoom, and ask if there's anyone present who is also recording this meeting. Appears that no one else has indicated so. Let the minutes reflect that no one else has indicated they're recording the meeting. And with me this evening for the Hadley Select Board via Zoom, we have Amy Parsons, David Phil. He was here a short while ago. He'll probably be logging back in shortly. Randy Isner, myself, Molly Keegan, and Jane Leven Smith. Amy, do you want to call your?
Call the Finance Committee meeting to order. And tonight we have myself, Amy Biden, Peter Matusko, Paul Benjamin, Carl Doolharmar, and Andy Mopack.
Okay, so we have three appointments this evening, and I'm just going to ask for the indulgence of the Finance Committee for a moment, if you don't mind. What I'd like to do is take the Park and Rec appointment, which means that the Park and Rec Commission also needs to call. You have a form? Or no?
So one of our members is out of the country.
Okay. Yep. I'm sorry, Jim, could you just come up?
Jim, you can come down here.
So we don't have a forum at this point because one of our members is out of the country, and the reason we're here is because one of the other members has stepped down from the board. And we did meet and vote about it to bring it to you folks.
And so you're asking for an appointment to be made to the vacant position?
Correct.
Okay, and that would be?
We would like to appoint Steve Higgins, former member, back to the board. He is graciously accepted because it was too late for us to get a name on the ballot. We, Amy spoke to the town clerk and we were unable to get a name on there because it's too late by the time everything happened.
Okay, and so are you asking the Select Board to appoint Steve Higgins between now and?
Next election.
Next election. And Jennifer, you checked this all out, and this is all?
This is all today. You're just going to appoint him to fill the, to fill the vacant term, and then when it comes open, they'll, they'll go right back onto the ballot.
Okay, anyone have any questions for Jim?
Motion to appoint.
Second.
Hey, motion made by Jane, seconded by Randy. Jennifer, roll call vote.
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Leven Smith?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, you're set.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, and thank Mr. Higgins.
Okay, so the appointment with the Finance Committee and Capital Planning Committee. So tonight, we're going to be reviewing the annual town meeting warrant. And. Oh, yeah, I was gonna, and we're going to start, I believe, with a discussion about the DPW building of capital planning. Paul, do you need to call your? Are you taking a vote tonight?
Can y'all come up here, please, to the empty tables, to the empty seat? You have to.
I would like to call the Capital Planning Committee meeting to order. I see that we have a forum here. We have Bill Bannock and Paul Benjamin and myself and possibly David Phil.
He's ready.
I'm here.
Well, David.
Okay, and because David's via, David's via Zoom. Yep, okay, all right. So first order of business then is the large capital planning item, the DPW building. So when we last left off, DPW Committee was going back to see if they could get some refined numbers. So I don't know, Jim, do you want to talk about that or? Yep.
It's bring a friend to the select board meeting.
What do you, I mean, the, at our last select board meeting, we had the idea that we're, the proposal was to cut off a bunch of the storage of the building, the back part of it, if you would, and go with a wash bay, a maintenance bay, two storage bays, and the full office contingent. And I requested of the architect to come revise the estimate because he had given us an estimate on basically, excuse me, April 2nd of roughly $15 million for the total project, give or take. And he came back at 2:30 this afternoon with a revised estimate, and it was $18.1 million for exactly the same thing that he had given us a price on three weeks ago. And I have been giving back and forth with text messages and emails to him as to, you know, what's going on here? Why the big discrepancy? My two cents of the price that he gave us today isn't worth the papers printed on, I'll be honest. And kind of disappointed in what he gave us, however. The Building Committee met this afternoon, and we talked about the different proposals and the prices and everything else and a whole bunch of stuff. Anyways, the Building Committee voted this afternoon to go forward. This revised estimate is for a building of roughly 15,000 square feet. The original building is 23,000 square feet with the, all the storage area. And the Building Committee voted this afternoon to recommend that the town warrant, because we feel the town meeting deserves to vote on this. All the work that's gone into it, the money we spent on the design, et cetera, et cetera. So the committee voted this afternoon to go forward with the original 23,000 square foot building at $19.65 million. That includes everything, new storage shed, design, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And the, it's up to the Select Board, obviously, to put that on a warrant. However, there is a bit of a catch here. I will go back to the architect and talk to him on the phone about this price he gave us because when he cut it at 2:30, he didn't give me any time because he wasn't available to really review it. You know, why the discrepancy between all these numbers? We've cut roughly 9,000 square foot off of the building, and the price only dropped, you know, we dropped, we cut a almost a third of the building off. Granted, it's, you know, nothing in it except a shell and a concrete floor and a heated floor with that. However, they only dropped $1.5 million off of the total price. So something isn't adding up. The contract that we have with the OPM and the architect is done at the end of town meeting. So if we decide to postpone this, this putting us on the warrant for any reason at this town meeting, the architect and the OPM will be available at the town meeting to explain and discuss and give any, you know, between now and town meeting, I intend to go back and try to get a better, why the discrepancy in the prices? However, the, after this town meeting, the contract is done. And any money, any work we would like the architect or the OPM to continue on will be at an additional cost that give us an hourly rate. However, there's no money to do this, so we're kind of in a bit of a catch that it probably should go on the town meeting warrant to at least let the townspeople vote on it and see where it goes because that also would require a ballot vote, obviously, as well.
David Phil, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just going to ask whether the contract specifies a specific date or specifies when it's presented at town meeting.
Town meeting, because when we went to, when we signed the contract, there was, we didn't know, we didn't know when to spring town meeting. I think it's, I think the words are spring town meeting or annual town meeting, something to that effect.
And Jim, are these dollars, dollar figures that they're given, are they in today's dollars or are they in inflated dollars?
They're, they're based on, they're based, good question. They're based on going out to bid this fall with construction to start basically a year from now. Or depending on the weather, something like that, in a fall, winter, whenever it might be, whenever it's conducive to construction. So it'd be, is projected forward. Obviously, this to say it's stuck with the tariffs is an unknown. But there was a recent bid opening for Boxborough, Mass that was after the tariffs was announced, and they came in well under the estimated budget that was proposed, knowing something like this might happen. So.
How'd you figure out the square footage that you needed for the equipment or what you wanted to do?
What we looked at was office space, you know, so many offices, so many male, so many female restrooms, so many men's restrooms, locker space, a meeting space, a little rake area, and that, that, that defined the office space, which is roughly 5,000 square feet. As far as a maintenance bay, a maintenance bay, you got a, all the doors in this building are going to be 14 foot high by, I forget if it's 12 or 12 foot wide maybe, but they're all high overhead doors. And it's a pitched roof and a wash through, drive-through wash bay, two maintenance bays. I forgot how many storage bays are in a full building. And storage base for approximately how many vehicles? With the idea that not everything would still be undercover because that would be an insanely big building, but it would, it would allow all the vehicles need to be undercover for certain times of the year to be undercover inside of a building.
Still keeping the cement block building, the old shop?
Right, yes, that stays.
They'll be keeping the same?
Yes, that stays. That would still be used for any vehicles that, anything that's over, I think the doors on that are like 11 foot tall. I'm not positive. So there's, there would still be room for roughly six dump trucks and probably a bucket load or pickup trucks in there, whatever might be put in there.
So I mean, I'm certainly supportive of bringing the, the building article to the town, but I feel like we've got one hand tied behind our back right now.
We fully understand, and I don't mean to interrupt you. A lot of people on the committee have the same opinion that, you know, the chances of $19 million passing probably isn't the best. The chances of a $15 million building passing, probably not much different. So go forward with this because we've heard the different field, different people on the committee have had, heard different ideas. There's, I just call it a bunch. We have no idea how many, but there's a bunch of people in town that are in favor of a good DPW facility within a reasonable cost, and a 20 million doesn't seem to be outrageous for that. By cutting all this storage off, they're saying, what have you done? Now we're going to have a building that's inadequate. And you've only going to save a couple million dollars? But now there, those are against it, and you've got a bunch of people that the building was probably a million dollars, they wouldn't vote for it. I'm being exaggerated here, but, and there's a bunch in the middle. And our opinion, our, our, the opinion of the board, of the Building Committee is bring it forward, see what they say, and if we have to make adjustments after that, if it passes, everything goes, that's wonderful.
Yeah, well, let me just finish my, my thought. So my, my thought is just, you know, again, agree, I would like to bring it forward to town meeting, but we've gone from a 20-something thousand square foot building down to a 15,000 square foot building, right? And to your point, the number didn't even close to proportionately change. So unless we have much better information at town meeting, I don't see anybody, because my concern would be, my concern is if they reduce the square footage by that amount and they're still coming in at 18, well, that now calls into question the original dollar figure for the much larger building, right? So I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity, knowing it's April 16th, to, I mean, I'm not comfortable making any sort of recommendation on this article. But myself tonight, I don't know about the Finance Committee or the Capital Planning Committee until we have more information, Mike?
Is there a chance that with more time they get better answers?
That's what I intend to contact the architect tomorrow to find out what's the discrepancy. But it seemed like you put this price together pretty hurriedly, if you would, for lack of a better term. And, you know, get back to him tomorrow because I've been after him since the day after the select board meeting two weeks ago to revise this price. And I just got it at 2:30 this afternoon. I couldn't tell you how many text messages and emails I've had with him, so.
So with more time, you may be able to get a better, some better numbers, and even if better numbers come in, you might even call the DPW Committee back together to talk even more. This town historically has two town meetings a year, and we do have a lot of budget discussions that may potentially have. Maybe two more bites at this. If you needed more time, you could just.
The only catch is after the end of this, of the annual, at the last, at the conclusion of the annual town meeting, the architect and OPM no longer have a contract and do any work for us.
At the conclusion of the May town meeting?
Yes.
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 But you said that they could be hired by, by the.
They, they, they have, they have given us an hourly figure to do work for us, but where's the money going to come from is the question because we're out. We don't have any more.
So one of the things that we're talking about on the committee to enhance what Jimmy's talking about is this is a really complex project, as we all know, and we need our experts there to explain this to town meeting. And what, you know, to Jimmy's point again, whatever the number is, it's going to be a hard sell. We all know that. We feel that we are obligated, we had a job that we were tasked to do, and we've done what we could. We tried to reduce the size of the building. It comes back, yeah, okay. Less size, almost the same money. That makes no sense. So we figured dollar for dollar, it makes more sense to go with the bigger building and, and the higher price tag and get it on this warrant so that the people can hear the explanation of what it's all about and then make a, a decision that's decent because the committee is not capable of explaining this to town.
Yeah, and this is a, you know, certainly a design to get to a, to an estimate based on other projects that are out there. And, you know, when, two weeks ago, when this designer was talking about the theoretical chopping off of this, of most of the storage in the back of the building, he was using rough numbers to come up with a $15 million number, and again, it came in at 18. And I, I don't know if, how much granularity we're going to find if he was shooting from the hip in that previous meeting, you know, and he actually spent some more time and, and it came out to be a higher number because we all know there's certainly a ticket to the party to get people there to build these things. And what we were chopping off was the, as Jim alluded to earlier, the least expensive square footage of the space. And again, to echo what Randy and Jim said, I mean, we don't want this to be another study that we paid 225 plus 50,000 before that and then wind up being on the shelf. We have an opportunity here to present to the town, to educate the town. The town wanted us to, to come back with the results of this study. We have it available to us. We have, we also have the expert consultant to be able to present it, speak better than I can anyway, but, and, and and give the, the full details. This is not a, you know, a full build spec design. You know, that is the next level, and that's part of, part of the soft costs of the next level of the project. But we certainly think it is imperative, and I know we have a very full plate already on the warrant. This is an item that's kind of been out there to be on the warrant all along. So I feel like to some extent, this is kind of getting sidelined at the end just because we, we, two weeks ago, we did a push. Hey, let's see what you could do to get the number down. And now you're like, well, we have more questions. Well, you're asking the designer to do something in a, in a hurried point of time. And by the way, this is, this is the fourth design that we've had. We've had two prior that were rejected. It's the third design that the, the committee voted to support.
So if they're, if they're pedal to the metal working on this because they're still committed to us right now, right?
We're assuming so.
We, we're assuming so, right? I'm, I mean, we're going to be meeting again next week, right? Jennifer?
Yes.
Yep, we're meeting again next week. I'm, I'm just, I mean, right now with the, the numbers all over the place, I, I just, I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot going to town meeting with us. But even by next week, is it possible that you could have a much greater level of confidence that that 19,000 is a good number? Because again, just based on what I.
19 million.
Hard, 19 million, yeah.
We wish it was 19,000. I can try. I can, I can get on him tomorrow and, you know, see what they can do and find out why are the numbers where they are?
And, and again, that smaller program was something that was directed to try to get the number down. It wasn't, it wasn't necessarily the program that the committee felt was the best program for the short term and then the 50, the 50-year scope of it. If we were looking to cut it back down to, you know, how small can we make it? That's where we're at now. I don't know necessarily if that would be the program that would still have full support of the committee.
Having been actively involved with buildings, OPMs and architects, I hear what they're saying, and I also understand that what they cut truly was not anything expensive in this building. We're talking about a shell. Their numbers seem correct. I think they're correct that we should really consider letting the town decide.
I just want to make sure everybody understands that this is at $826 a square foot in terms of cost. That, in my opinion, is absurd.
Absolutely.
You're working for municipality.
And, well, the thing is, is that the steel doesn't need prevailing wage. The concrete doesn't need prevailing wage. So those are, those are not, you're talking about in the total scheme of things, the labor that's actually required to erect a building, which is pretty much like a rector said, a Lego building, where everything comes in a package and they just put it up. There's not a lot of labor. So the prevailing wage argument, in my opinion, is not a good argument. I, I just built a building that's 46,000 square feet, and my costs were $300 a foot. That's fully furnished.
So even if you doubled the labor portion of that cost?
These numbers are, in my, and based on the fact that you got two different numbers, and I think the, the committee is doing a great job, but I don't, in my opinion, this, this engineer or architect, I don't have the most highest confidence.
The, the numbers that you, the dollars per square foot that you're seeing are pretty much standard for the last several years. Back four years ago, they were much higher than that during COVID, when construction was booming. But for a building of this type, that is an average price per square foot. As much as you don't like it, and much as I don't like, I don't like it either. I think it's insane. Absolutely. You expect, if you expect me to defend that, you are really nuts.
I, I just think with, with, what, basically what Molly said, and, and the fact that we took out, you know, roughly, you know, more than a third of the building size and the price according to this engineer didn't change, you know, I, I, I call it suspect.
I, that's exactly my point. I didn't want to make a big deal about, but I'll just give you a few numbers. The 23,000 square foot building, construction costs alone, which is a good number to use, that cost is $750 a square foot. For the 15,000 square foot building, the construction cost alone jumps to $1,054 a square foot. Why is it $300 more? We cut 9,000 square foot off. The 9,000 square foot that we cut off comes out to $170 square foot reduction. Now, granted, it's a shell. It's a concrete. It's aluminum. It's steel. There's not a lot to it. But even $170 a square foot, you can't even build a house for that today. And we're, and we're, you know, there's a lot of things that don't add up, and that's why I've got to go back to the architect and say, you know, what's going on here?
And the last thing, the last thing I would just add is that when we reduce the scope from 23,000 to 15,000, does that still meet the, the minimum requirements that I guess we, I'd reach? Again, there's a lot of things that are nice to have, but in terms of the, the intent of this project and meeting certain, you know, we have to have certain items that were definite that we have to do. Does that 15,000 meet, meet all of those requirements?
That's a difficult question to answer. Let me answer it. I don't mean to evade the question. I just want to give you. The office space has never changed from the very first proposal because that is something. The office space has never changed from the very first proposal, because that is something that. They're working on trailers, it, it includes, the, the office space has been consistent all the way through, because that is absolutely minimum requirement.
Per code. A, a lot of that is per codes.
Right.
Clearance and things.
The, the off, the, there's one, we reduced to one maintenance bay, could we get by, the original one had two, could we get by with one? Yeah, probably. We definitely need the wash bay, we definitely need a maintenance bay. We have two storage bays in the reduced size building. According to Scott. The DPW director, yes, I can work with that, it's, it's better than what we have today. Does it meet our needs? Well, that's a tough question to answer, it meets. The wash bay needs, it meets the maintenance bay needs. But there will still be equipment stored outside year round, because it's just not enough coverage. Even the bigger facility, there will be some stuff still outside. Like I said at the beginning, to build a facility that puts everything inside would be. Probably forty million dollars, and that's insane. But at least it'll keep the, the critical equipment undercover. When it's needed, at the right time of the year, and that's the bigger facility. The smaller facility, not so much, there will still be some stuff outside, but, you know. It's, it's better than what we have today, diesels, as long as you plug them in, they will start in the cold weather. It's a bigger drain on them, it's, it's not as good for the equipment, however. It's better than what we've got today.
David, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, I, I, I think the idea of cutting off five thousand square feet to save a million dollars, I think is foolish in the, in the long run. Uh, you know. The issue here is if we bring this to town meeting before we are one, we one hundred percent have our ducks in a row. And on top of a twenty-nine or twenty-eight article warrant. I just think that we are not going to be able to give this the, the. Possibly two hours or so, based on the library and senior center and fire station experience. Of debate that's going to be required and the time to answer all the questions and get the voters, the solid information they need. And I feel like it's going to be a wasted effort, I'm not arguing that it needs to be brought at some point. But if we are going to have a special, special town meeting, I think that's the time, because I think we're gonna. Uh, we're going to shoot ourselves in the foot here, bringing a not one hundred percent ready project and asking people to raise their taxes by six hundred dollars a year. For twenty or thirty years.
Anybody have any questions for the DPW committee right now?
Um, I have one.
Okay.
When you're talking to the architect, ask him. If he would be willing to extend his time with us. To a potential special, special town meeting, just to see what his response is to that.
Do that.
Worst case scenario, couldn't you just ask? Him to continue the planning phase of it up until the May town meeting and then. Would, we could pay him for his time at, to explain everything at the town meeting where this is actually going to be presented. I mean, there shouldn't be much more than.
We can't hear you anymore. Still can't hear you. Still nothing. Still nothing.
Amy, can you, anybody hear us?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay.
Okay, great, thanks Alex. Sorry for the technical blip there. Um, so question for the capital planning committee. Um. Can we assume that you don't want to vote on this tonight, or do you want to take a vote?
I think we're hesitant to vote, and I can't speak for the rest of the members, but. I think our purpose of coming here tonight was really to get a definitive number. And it sounds like that's up in the air and actually a. Even a timeframe, if we're gonna, if, if the board's gonna entertain a deferral. Then we most certainly. Are able to have some more time to reconvene at another date and make a definitive decision on the amount. Isn't, that seems to be the wild card right now, is the amount.
It's a big one.
The only one.
Capital, that, you know, this thing seems so. Uh, fuzzy. You know, I mean, Jim, you know, you, you, you were, you were giving a number the other day when we were in a meeting, and it was, it was like thirteen or fourteen million dollars to do it. We didn't want to vote on. You know, an, a number that didn't actually exist, it was just a, you know, cares what I think it's going to be, now you've found out. Like pull the rug out from under you. Okay, I'd like to see them come in front of our board. The, not finance, the, uh, I'd love to have them in front of finance too, but, um, at the time, front of, yes, have the architect come in front of the. Um, capital committee, have a special meeting for them. Um, to get this clarified and also explain to us how we're getting into, you know, seven hundred dollars square foot number. It just seems astronomical. And is that? Because it's municipalities and they can, and because voters just. You know, we, we all roll over because we're told this is the way it is, or is this?
Is Boston rate, is Washington Mass rate?
Right. I, I think Jennifer, I think Jennifer can explain the process.
Okay. But I mean, I want to see something down here, I think it's incredible that these people have worked in these trailers. And, you know, I don't think the answer is by them in trailers. So, you know, I think we need to do this right, we need to catch up with what they should have. Sorry, I don't want to, I don't want to plant the seed, sorry, we'll take that back. No, I mean, I think that they've been down, I've been in those buildings, it's, you know, I took the tour of all the facilities, you know, and it is. It's amazing that we have people who have worked in those conditions for all this time, but. Um, you know, we, and I don't think we're building the Taj Mahal here either. You know, but the numbers are just like. Blow you away numbers, and, and I don't understand how they can be that high.
Yeah, Jane, Jane did want to point out that the senior center and you're, you're sure of that number?
Yes, I just did the calculation, this building was built at six hundred and sixty-six dollars a square foot, but. That include tables and chairs and all.
So you have all the walls, you have a structure, you have a lot of glass. This is not a, this is not a hover building.
It's five years ago and there's been, there's been a seventeen percent loss of living.
I understand that too, but, but I know if I call one of the metal structure buildings, and I said I need a twenty-three thousand square foot, I've got a, you know, a company that needs. Big bag bringing a lot of trucks and stuff, that number is not going to be anything close to this.
Just, just, just. Just a little bit of clarification there, this building will become fully equipped, the office will be fully furnished. Um, bridge crane in the maintenance base. Lift, the drive-on lift of one type or another for the maintenance base, this is going to come with. Maintenance, a big, the heavy duty maintenance equipment as well.
And then, so maybe one of the things that when they explain it, and when we go to a town meeting, what we need is, okay, we're doing a five thousand square foot office, and that is six hundred or eight hundred dollars a square foot. For a fully, you know, operational office with air conditioning and heating and walls and places for bio cabinets and everything else that goes with all the wiring and such. And that's at that rate, and that's this much of this eighteen million dollars, let's just use that number. And then we have. You know, uh, this building and it's this much, and then there's equipment that's going in there, that's a, you know, a, a gantry lift that can pick up a, you know, a freighter. And, you know, and this is what it costs, and that's why, and I think if, if that was explained to me and, and to other people, at least you could understand. Okay, there's different components here, some of it isn't four hundred dollars a square foot, it's just the building structure. That's metal with, you know, steel and a heated floor, but this area here is a little bit more, and this equipment is, and that's how we got to this number. I think that's what we need to see.
Yeah, so I think, just in the spirit of times, we have an awful lot to get, get through tonight.
Yeah.
Um, so I want to echo what, you know. This, I mean, we really appreciate all of the effort that the DPW building committee is putting into this, it's just, you know, again, we are where we are. So, um, whatever Jim, you and your committee can find out over the course of the next week or so, but I mean, I, I. I'm certainly leaning into the idea of. A second town meeting where we can cover everything that Paul just articulated.
Also think that if we have numbers that we can say this lift costs. A million dollars or whatever it costs, I have no idea, and this is the kind of equipment that we need to have to maintain.
Mm-hmm.
That the town is much more receptive to have a real. Something to look at instead of just an abstract number.
So Paul, was that the only item for your committee?
That was the only item.
Okay, do you want to?
To discuss, so I guess we can.
You can.
Call for a vote to adjourn.
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you for coming, gentlemen.
Thank you very.
All right.
So just before we get off this topic.
Yep.
I just want to reiterate that. The committee is hell bent, if you will, on getting this on a warrant.
Mm-hmm.
Our concern was. I mean, we talked about this scenario this afternoon. Um, the concern was that we are going to lose our experts. And then we wouldn't have the money to pay them by the hour to present at a later date.
Too.
I, I, you know, the hourly rate is just. Yeah, regarding there, it's. Um, and if, if the later date is going to be in the next couple of months, I personally don't have problems.
He was going to be asking.
Okay.
Extension this.
Alright.
Pass the town meeting, right.
Playing through the scenario here though, that if he says.
No.
We're, we're done, we've exhausted, we've, we've exhausted our, your funding.
Right, so if, again, we're, we're having another meeting next week, right, the select board is, assuming the finance committee would, would certainly be willing, so.
We got some ballpark prices here for you. For the, um, architect, the principal is two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Project manager is two hundred. Site rep is one forty-five and admin services is seventy-five. So you would probably be paying for the principal and possibly the admin services for a town meeting.
Right.
To get paperwork and stuff like that.
So theoretically, it might cost us fifteen hundred dollars or something like that to have them come to. A special town meeting.
At least. We're over an hour's drive away.
Okay.
But I, I think if, 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 if it doesn't pan out that he's willing to extend his contract to this special town meeting. Then if there, if. The, if there's a way to find the money. To, to pay them, to represent, present the project, then. I'm fine with that. As long as it's not. Two years down the road, if it's three months down the road, that's okay, if it gets much beyond that. Then we're, I don't think the committee is going to be very happy about that.
Couple of questions. When do you anticipate the special, special town meeting? Because he's going to ask that.
Yeah. Um, don't know.
I don't know that we're. We're set on picking a date yet, but.
Even a month would be.
I'm aiming it for the very first Thursday in September, like. When people come back from vacation and, and we have an opportunity to have as many people there to discuss this.
Okay. Did you want me back next week if I get any information or not?
Sure.
Okay.
If you're willing.
I am.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Jimmy.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Alright, so I think that was like kind of a, a one-off that we wanted to, to cover, so are we ready to just start at the top of the morning? Through at this point, or? Is that amenable to everybody?
You have to do the former government presenting.
Well, they're in appointment too, yeah. I think we need to. Well. Mary, how, how long is your form of government?
I can be as fast as I can. You know, some high points that they, that some of those were detailed with their questions.
Okay, um, Amy, you're, as the chair, are you okay with them just? Okay, because I have a feeling we may start really digging in over here on some of these other things.
And we have to also vote on a few others. The things that we still.
Yes. Yep. Okay. Alright, so, uh, thanks, so this is Mary Carney from our form of government committee, she's the current chair. Um, it looks like we have some, uh, John Allen is a committee member, uh, myself, David Phil. And I think that's it today. Oh, Bill. No, I don't like to say Bill's name, okay, and Bill Dwyer. Okay.
Okay. Um, I also want to point out the other members are John Silvestro, Sally Lenowski. And I want to thank Joyce Chunglo, who was our chair and had to step away. Which I wish she didn't, but here I am. Um, and we have the assistance from our consultants at the Collins Center, so they've been very helpful. So we just wanted to come and give you a. Brief summary of what we've done so far and a couple of options for going forward and see if you have guidance on. On whether, which option we should take. So just, I'll hit the high points, and if you have questions, I can give you more details, but I know you've got a lot to do tonight. So we've started out with basically education about governance options, fairly limited for a town under six thousand people, we have to have. You know, town meeting. And we have our select board, and then really our only choice is to want a weak town administrator or a strong town administrator. So we've been looking at that. Um, we learned about charters, we looked at a lot of different examples. Um, we sent a couple in. There's one in South Hadley that we're pretty happy with using as a framework going forward, if we draft something. Which is something we're going to ask. Um. And we, we've been researching the structure of the executive part of the town governance. Um, there, there's a work plan that the Collins Center gave us. And that has more things like the legislative, uh, elections, elected versus appointed boards, finance. We haven't done any of that stuff yet, so our question for guidance is. Um. Do you want us to come up with a written product of what we, where we are so far is, our group is pretty. We're all on the same page, just sort of thinking a strong town administrator. Would be the best way to go, we could solicit it input from the department heads, from our acting town administrator. There seems to be some gaps in authority that maybe are causing efficiency issues. And there's a lot more on the select board's place than there really needs to be, we, we have the strong town administrator form of governance. That would take stuff off of your plate and put it on someone else's. Um, so that is our. Our current state, we could either. Write that up as, you know, a special act. You know, just changing from weak to strong. And then call it a day for our committee, or. We could do, create a full charter, which basically it makes that change, but also just codifies. Current state of the governance, instead of having. You know, state law, bylaws, all over the place, we just bring it all together in one document. Um, the third, longer term option would be to go through the rest of those things on the work plan, like elected versus appointed. Boards and commissions and finance and all that, and write a full charter that might have other changes. That, for that, we recommend a hiatus and. Finish up what we're doing now, but maybe pick up later when the new town administrator has been on board for a bit and can join us and help. You know. Going forward. So that's, those are the options we're thinking either, you know. Put something together for maybe a special town meeting on strong town administrator. Um, or just keep working for larger dots, we can, I don't think we can have a charter done by. Twelve. Thank.
Well, our original. Um. Charge to this committee was to explore the options and to bring back. A suggestion of what you felt was perfect for the town.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's the first of what you've described, and all the other would be really nice, but follows later. So I encourage us to let them come up with a. Proposal to change the town.
And then, and put on hiatus, like Mary said, any further work until it comes like a phase, phase two of this project. And once we have. Somebody on board in that seat. Uh, David, sorry.
I was just going to say, I, I think the strong town administrator as an incremental approach is a good way to approach it and see what the effect is. On our town government before we go full charter. Um, because maybe we don't need a full charter, maybe a strong town administrator will solve a lot of our problems. But I just don't want to, you know, take the giant leap when we can make a small step and fix a lot of problems.
I also think that it's. They're basically at a place where that can happen, whereas the rest of it is going to take. Again, like many town committees, forever, let's just do it.
Mm-hmm. Okay, Brandon?
For the record, could you explain the difference between a weak and a strong? For the record, could you explain the difference between a weak and a strong town administrator?
That's a good question. Um, I don't know if I have a lot of good information on that, but. More of what we're, we're thinking is more, uh, clarifying. The responsibilities and the authorities. So the town, strong town administrator, I think the big thing that would affect. Select board's lives is the strong town administrator would have more appointment authority. So.
Hiring and firing.
Yeah, so you wouldn't have to decide, you know, who the next hire for, you know. Snowplow driver is, you know, that would be just taken care of at the department head and town administrator. Whereas right now we have a weak, and it, it, weak makes it sound pejorative. It's, it's just an option. It, I mean, it's, it's. It's not a bad thing that it's weak, but I know it's more diffuse. There's different reporting lines. Some people report. To commissions and boards, you know, we just kind of think it all needs to go up to the town administrator who would just come. To the select board for, you know, department head type stuff, not, you know. Three layers down from your hiring decisions. Seems like that is an efficiency issue so far. Um, and in the, you know, when the job market is tight, if you're waiting to get things before the next select board meeting or something. Your candidate may take another position. It's just, you guys have enough to do. And I, I also wanted to say. We talked to a lot of people working in town and. Every single one is. So proud and happy with our workers that we've had no issues. But. We get one bad employee in the wrong spot with our current reporting structures and town administrator can't. Uh, address it. It's just a potential problem. There's no current problem that I've heard about, like our. The town has wonderful employees and we're very lucky.
Um, Amy, did you have anything or? Amy Parsons, sorry. Okay, I'll assume not. So it, it.
Yeah.
Other Amy. No, I'm good. Okay.
So one of the, um, questions is if you, if your committee could look into. Um, I know that some towns such as, I think Montague, maybe even South Hadley have. Like a district, a special, maybe a fire district, or can we do a public safety district? Because a lot of our, um. A lot of our public safety goes down Route Nine, right? So that's the business district and that's where a lot of their calls are. Um, versus the residents. Is there a way to do a special district like some of these other towns have and then it would be. There would be a, a special fee for that. And then it would be a special tax and that could help maybe. I know it's a big deal and it's almost like a. Its own form of government. It's a big deal to put out. So I thought this would be, well, you're looking at this stuff, the best type of committee to look into something.
Yeah, that could be added to the, that could be added to the list for the phase, phase two if we go.
Not for now, but I'd like to see if you could look into that to see if it's something.
Okay, so I don't know that we need to evoke, but is the select board comfortable with, a-again, so the committee is. Exists at the pleasure of the board, so we just wanted to make sure we're not going off, you know, too far to the left or right and. Um, so it sounds like.
Sounds like you're going pretty straight.
Pretty straight, yeah, okay.
Start writing and.
Alright, so that'll be the next thing that we'll work on, that town administrator.
Alright.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks for letting me sneak into the middle of your heads.
Yeah. Alright. Okay. Back to the annual town meeting warrant. Um. So we'll start with. The first articles and, and Kirk Watley is here. For.
I'm gonna share the warrant on. The big screen.
Okay.
Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Kirk can use the eyes and the back of his head to see that.
Also, it is available on board docs for everyone. I did not print copies of them, because I loaded it on board docs. I did print some copies the other night, because it was. Finalists.
Um.
This a little bit so they can hear me. Okay. So, starting with article one, so for the select board, your warrant is still open, so, um. I'd like to ask how you would like to move through. Um, because tonight we need you to review all the warrant articles, make your final decisions, close the warrant. And I need to know the division of motions on who will be speaking to everything. Um, so is there a word you would like to follow or do you want to just dive in?
Yeah, I shall go.
Dive in, alright. Alright, so the first warrant article is the annual town election. This is not an article that you have to make. Any recommendations on. It's just a standard operating. Um, so we have adjusted, the next items up are the consent agenda. We have adjusted the consent agenda. To, uh, include articles seventeen and eighteen.
So Jennifer, I'm sorry, does Kirk have a?
He does.
Yep.
Okay, you're able to work on that, okay.
Okay. Um. Article two is the consent agenda. For grants, this is a standing. Article that appears on every warrant. And there are no special changes to that. So. I, I'm not certain, Molly, do you want to do the votes right now on them? Why not?
Yeah, why not?
Okay.
So the consent agenda, should it not say will include articles number?
It doesn't.
Does on the first page.
So, where, oh, okay. Alright, okay, I, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I, I, if there are mistakes, please tell me now so that we can fix them. But it's there?
Yes, it is. I see it.
Okay. So the consent agenda items are items are non-controversial, so in, in all hope, heard passes them all as one item. But however, we do need votes for each and every one in case a person objects and you'll have to take them up separately. So, um, I would ask that y'all. Uh. Make a motion to recommend article two.
So moved.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, article three is chapter ninety. This is for the highways that we do. Uh, this again, non-controversial item on the consent agenda. I'd like to ask you to make a motion to.
Motion to recommend.
The motion made by Amy, seconded by Randy, roll call vote.
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you. Article number four is a short-term borrowing and it's also authorizes our treasurer to borrow money from time to time for the fiscal year.
Yes.
Motion made by Jane, seconded by Amy, roll call vote.
Uh, roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you. Article five is contracts in excess of three years. This is a consent agenda item. This allows for the town administrator, the select board to extend. Um, or renew. Uh, contracts passed through here. Thank you.
Second.
Motion made by Amy, seconded by Jane, roll call vote.
Roll, it's my job, uh, roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Uh, Devon Smith?
Yes.
And Parsons. Yes. I don't know if I lag, but I just say so moved, hoping I get in.
Yeah, you're good.
Uh, next is article six. This is the water treatment membrane reserve. This is again another item that we have to do every year. This is to keep our water plant operating correctly.
Okay, there is no, uh, in parentheses, consent agenda after that one, like the previous article.
I will correct that right now, so. I will crack it that tomorrow morning.
Why is that consent?
Yeah.
That's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to spend. On a water reserve.
Yeah, that's not, you, you gotta go skip the seventeen and eighteen, don't you?
But it's included under article six on the page one.
We renumbered. If y'all don't want it there, it can come off. It's, 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 it's easy to remove it.
Yeah, I think a hundred and fifty thousand. I don't think that should be a consent agenda item.
You got it.
So just take six off the top. Right?
Okay, but we can still vote on that now.
Please, please still vote on that now.
Okay.
Even if it's not consent.
Motion approved.
Motion. Motion made by Jane, seconded by Amy, roll call vote.
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you.
We will address that article should it require conversation.
I think we'll go through that after, we'll.
Yeah.
DPW.
That was, so usually DPW or liaison, yeah.
Okay. I, I.
Right, 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 okay. Yep.
Okay. Okay, so article seven is the amendment of the FY twenty-five, twenty-five omnibus budget and general fund. And Linda is, is ready to speak to that.
There's, yeah, one of the handouts in, on, on board docs, and I do have a couple of extras, and I gave hard copies to all the finance committee members, and so.
Before you start, please hear right now. We, your, your old one that you're working for is Andy. The old one that you're working for has had a change to it, which is why there's no paper copies.
Okay.
We were able to switch the prior year invoice that we had pending. Um, Linda very cleverly found another fund to pay it from, so we were able to remove it from. The warrant.
So we have no prior?
Yeah, no prior year invoices.
Nice.
Um, so. Success, I see that. Yeah, and it should have been. So we resourced that and dug it out, and so it's gone. It's just, it's wonderful thing. It's out of here, it's out. So now your article eight is.
Yes, Jamie? Did you have a question, Amy?
No, I was just gonna say the prior year invoices is the one that I always. I always present.
We can find you a new one.
Yeah.
So do we need to open the, open the warrant to delete this?
The warrant is still open, y'all have not closed it.
Okay. Alright.
Okay. So now Linda is already.
Alright.
Article twenty-five, verse seven.
The. You probably get the favorite, uh, budget you've ever voted on because the net impact of this is negative two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six. Dollars. We are reducing the FY twenty-five budget. And, uh, there's, uh. Uh, uh, there's a. Three parts to it. One is, if you recall in the fall, we voted opioid funding. For a couple of positions, one in, uh, for a couple of expenditures, one was in the police, and one was in the. Um, border health, and neither of them got underway this year, and we're going to pull that money back. We don't want to lose the opioid funding, so we're reducing those budgets by the amount we increased them by. And returning fifty-two thousand, five hundred of opioid funding, uh, back to the opioid fund. That, the, um, other part of it is, uh, we reduced OPEP. By a hundred and ninety thousand. The result of that is restoring fifty-five thousand. Back to stabilization funds because we funded OPEP fifty-five thousand out of stabilization funds. So that's, I believe, we're going to increase stabilization fund, um, right there. And, uh, the rest of OPEP, a hundred and thirty-five thousand, uh, we funded from, uh, from free cash. We are not going to fund OPEP, we are going to pull those names back in because we need that cash for the twenty-six budget. And that's what we're going to do. Uh, the other, the other, uh, free cash pullback is going to be from the. Program with the, that was the budget program that was budgeted in, pressures budget in mind, that we were not able to get up and running. And we were therefore able to, to, uh, cancel it for twenty-five and for twenty-six, and we're, we're just not going to do that budget this time. Uh, so it brings over twenty-five thousand back into the budget we've been used for, um. More valuable, uh, in more valuable directions. And let's see, uh, yeah, opioid, OPEP, and, and cash. Oh yes, and the rest of the changes in that budget. Um, back in the fall, we voted a flat amount of money to go with, I mean, a, a single line item. Of all of the, um, increases, union and non-union salary increases that were expected to take effect, but were not yet. Solidified. So we put the money into the select board budget and. In this article, we are moving it, uh, the money out of select board and putting it into the, uh, different budgets. Uh, along that, that need the funding, uh, for the increases in their budgets to get to the end of the year. And again, that's it, that's a negative, uh, it's a negative budget. So. That's seven point one, do you want to vote on that, or like a one to seven point two, which is the enterprise? Well, I'll just do that. Enter, I'll explain the enterprise fund, we're moving five thousand. Uh, there was an error in the, um. Yeah, that, that schedule that had been provided to us on one of the bonds, so it was five thousand less is due. Uh, in this year, uh, in May than we had expected and, um. Just our luck, it was sewer reserves, which is the one that most, most badly needs. Uh, to have, get some money back into us to keep us afloat, uh, for a while longer, so we went ahead and put it right in this budget to get that five thousand back into sewer, sewer reserves. Again, a negative question, negative five thousand.
Any questions for Linda?
Questions about the, so this means. Doing all this, this, this is interesting, but, um, and so we have to expect they will have zero free cash or how this is going to affect. Because what we're doing is just taking the free cash now instead of waiting.
Yes, but it is free cash that was, what was allocated in this budget that we are not taking from. Uh, where.
Futures.
Doesn't impact our normal rollbacks. We stopped OPEP. For this very purpose.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not a normal rollback, um, I mean, I, you know, without voting this.
But is that going to affect our article number?
Our, our budget article?
The article number eight.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we're, that's going to be all changed up now.
No.
No.
No, 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 we already had, I, I mean, we had that as a, remember we called it redirected free cash?
This is, oh, we didn't have a dollar mark in there.
Yeah, we do. Um, yeah, when we get to that one, that's the one hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and seventy-six. Dollars redirected free cash from FY twenty-five budget.
Yeah. Okay, okay, I thought that.
Yeah, so we have to claim it in this article before we can spend it in the next one. And for those who question whether, uh, this is a little bit of a, a funny, different thing to do. Um, I did have a, uh, a Zoom meeting with, uh, Department of Revenue, the LS attorney last week, and it, this is okay. This can be done.
Okay, any questions for Linda about the, um, prior year adjustment? Or current year adjustment, I should say. Um, if not, I'll adjutate a motion.
Motion to recommend article seven.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Randy, seconded by Jane, all those in, uh, roll call vote.
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yeah.
And Parsons.
Yeah.
Board on that.
And then finance committee, I would need a vote from y'all as well about this, for this one.
The motion.
No, you did not.
Okay, sorry.
I thought it was adding to eight. That's why I was, I was confused.
Yeah. Y'all skipped both of the. Budget articles on, on day night, because the numbers were.
Probably nine to ten, so, okay, so we're now voting on the eighth.
Seven. Yeah, I needed motion, article seven.
Seven point one?
Both. They all go together.
Okay, so I can just say seven. Alright, motion to recommend article seven. And then the FY twenty-five omnibus budget, general fund, and amend the FY twenty-five sewer enterprise fund budget. Seventh, second.[1710.71]
Alright, all in favor?
You need a roll call for this or?
Well, they're all in person, you don't have to.
Right.
Okay. Article eight.
Linda, I think you should just take it away.
On our plate of the next budget? Um okay, I did, well, Mike's gonna speak first, but I do want to just say administratively, I did get the uh, these are onboard docs and you have them. Um. Finance Committee, I handed out the uh. I do have three extras. Well, I do have three extras, but I would like Jane if you want to take. See if she maybe get one the first.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's also up on the big screen.
Alright, um so uh just so we're all on the same page, um obviously everyone knows that Linda and I have been uh working on this budget since uh. Last year. Um and you know, we did make a recommendation to utilize stabilization. For the ambulance employees that were outstanding um and presented a balanced budget from that point. Um we met with Finance Committee, we had a by-board meeting, just so the folks that are watching uh know. We had a by-board meeting with Finance Committee and Select Board on Tuesday and Mon- Monday? Monday night. Monday night, um and some recommendations were made by the Finance Committee and I thought I'd make some adjustments because the. The uh. Will to use uh. Stabilization funds is very low, if if it exists at all, and we understand that. Uh so. We spent the better part of the last two days kind of rearranging things because it did kind of turn the budget that we put together on its ear a bit. Um and we have been trying really hard to try to reconcile this and put everything together. Uh ultimately, um. Linda will get into the numbers themselves, but I just wanted to do a twenty thousand foot view of where. I we think that we are, we'd like to to see this go. Um Amy put together uh a list of uh the recommendations from the Finance Committee and everyone agreed on it, so we're we're. Going with the with these recommendations and we've adjusted the budget based upon what was discussed, so. Um we are uh making uh the. The uh move of the uh. The budget reductions from the ambulance expenses, the overtime and the intermittent employees that was discussed last night. Will be reduced. Um. We are gonna utilize the ambulance income that has come in so far, the OPEP that we just talked about. Um free cash that we have avail available to us and we are going to do a partial on the. Cost of living that we discussed and push the finality of it to. Uh the fall town meeting to deal with it at a later date. Um. There's a, there's an issue with the position freezes um that I I just wanna talk about. Uh I did speak with the Department Heads about freezing uh certainly hiring and. Based upon the list, I think we all kind of agreed from the other night that it is a bit of an arbitrary list. It's basically just. So happens to be the positions that are open right now. Um and so six months from now could be completely different and we were aware that. No one wanted to use stabilization three months ago when we were putting budget together, that list likely would have been different back then as well. Um. All but two or three of these positions on here are either public safety positions specifically or public safety adjacent positions. And they are currently, most of them uh likely referring overtime to other people picking up the slack, these positions already being open. And so the longer that they stay open, the longer that that is gonna happen. Um. The good news is is that we went through this list and based upon how long some of these positions have been opened. Uh and the likelihood of them continuing to be open while we search for a replacement. The number that we were looking to hit has already been hit. Um we are, we are over that number based on what is remaining, what will be remaining and salvaged from those salary lines. So.
In the in the current year budget.
In the current year budget. And so essentially, um. Stabilization will still likely need to be used, but the number will be smaller and Linda will go over that. And no hiring frees will be necessary. Um. There's a concept here that I I really, I think it's the the linchpin to this entire discussion, which is this. I know that last night was probably the fir- or Monday night was probably the first time anyone heard discussion of potential overrides and things like that. I I. Get it. These are, this is something that it's, it hasn't snuck up on us, but it is something that we. Really didn't want to have to go down this road and we've been doing everything we can to put this budget together to avoid it. Um. But. With that being said, um. The amount of money that Linda will explain in a moment may need to come from stabilization. Will never be used. We will never have to take the money out of stabilization. If the Finance Committee and the Select Board agree to potentially put a special, special town meeting on with a potential override amount. To bring this budget. Back to balance as well as. Prepare future budgets. Um. If the override fails. You're not gonna need that stabilization money because we will be laying off employees. Won't have to touch it. If the override passes. You won't need to use the stabilization money because the influx of revenue will put you over what you need. So long as we ask for enough from the taxpayers to balance the budget. So ultimately, the budget that we are putting forward with that money in the stabilization, with the stabilization request. Is an on-paper request, so long as. We put in an override request in front of the taxpayer and they decide one way or the other. Um. That's kind of as simple as I can explain it. Linda can get into the details, but. Just kind of wanted everyone to have a twenty thousand foot view. That's hard. I know it's a. No one wants to touch stabilization again. But that's the concept.
I was starting to sense it's lovely. Um. So yes, the use of stabilization. Um at at this point, what we did when we started out. Uh the budget that we were looking at on. Monday night, used five hundred and fifty two thousand nine hundred and six. Five hundred and fifty two thousand nine hundred and six in stabilization funds in order to balance that budget. Um that money was directly related to what we were using in was from when we met with you in in uh end of January, what we called that first pass. Because we wanted to get the sort of the upper lead on how we would proceed. Um that the stabilization use directly lined up with our our uh moving the ambulance out of an article fact and into the budget. And the only way to add that kind of chunk of money. To our regular budget because our the budget we've had the last few years is is progressing as a budget did. Does and then then boom, we're moving uh you know, over half a million dollars into it. And when you have eight hundred thousand dollars of uh revenue increasing year, that is a major impact on the budgets, but we thought the way we could keep it from. Really kind of disrupting the rest of the project. Was to segregate it, keep it segregated and have it directly funded by stabilization. And we had been through that, so I mean, we kind of got the the read that that we didn't. We weren't told not to. We, there was no uh, there was no objections um about use of stabilization. And the reason I did, I I say it that way is. It takes time to cut five hundred thousand dollars out of the budget if you want, whether it's out of an ambulance or out of something else. The budget we that would have come to you would have been. Very uh with a different kind of a budget if we're really talking about doing um doing a budget or doing our operations in a different way. Without use of stabilization, you would have seen um a a a different mix. To make up for not having done it at this point, especially in two days. By saying. Just don't replace the people that you have um that that uh with the positions that are open. It's just not gonna work that way because you take those amounts and we'd go through these budgets and say, okay, we take this much out of assessors and we take this much out of HR. We take this much out of police and this, but now you're removing positions from the budget. Now where do we go from there? Um. Are are those the positions? Are those the the positions that are most important not to have in town? That that's just like I said, as Mike said, it's it's arbitrary, would have, we would have. Created it differently, we would have crafted it differently. Um whether the town supports going ahead with an override to support the budget. At a level that of operations that we have seen, that we're that we are experiencing up until now. It's it's really up to to them. Um and that's why we would like to spend opportunity to have that presented to um the town. To see, do we want to continue at at this level? Um if not, then it's it's a very different budget. So it's not one we can back off now with cuts because we don't want to use stabilization. In in May. And then make up for it in September if the town decides to go ahead and and funding the higher um. Un- ongoing budget. At a higher level. So. We. Really do recommend using the amount and putting the stabilization fund. Funding in. The as a revenue source at this point. It is under, it's reduced by two hundred and thirty two thousand six hundred and two dollars. Because it was pretty universally um said because of the two nights ago. That you wanted to keep the ambulance staff. But not to continue to run the program because um. That the program has shifted quite a bit in our expectations as to whether we would ever be, we we had bought earlier year. Our older times when this was presented to town. We had expected that free cash and stabilization with these. Um paid back when the ambulance got up and running and was um was bringing in the fees. As it turns out, we found out, I think it was two meetings ago, so four weeks ago, when we see figures that show that the revenues coming in. Won't cover. Even the program itself, let alone pay the town. Back, so we really have to sit up and take notice of that and start looking about how we have to do something. Differently. So the funds have come out of the ambulance. Uh with the exception that the personnel hired would continue to work, um would continue with the town. And it would um if they all choose to stay, they would, we would be enhancing the fire department and having some lower level of use of the ambulances. I know there's some uh whether it can continue at a B level or some. Less, some lower level use of it for transports or whatever, until such times the town wants to take this up again. If 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 we have, if we were looking at this going back from scratch and seeing this as a as a program that was. Going to take as much money from our. Our our resources as it has, we probably would have delayed or slowed the growth of the ambulance department, but we are where we are. And now we have to deal with it. We have people on board at very qualified field people that um that there's seems to be a lot of interest in keeping them in the fire department. And allowing this perhaps to to continue. But not if it decimates the rest of the budget. So um. As we were talking about it yesterday is when it kind of came to us like, oh, we're gonna put this in the budget, but we're probably not going to spend. The stabilization fund. Just remember what we did one article ago is if you look down your twenty five, you see we're used fifty five thousand dollars in stabilization funds. But ten minutes ago, we just. Did not. We're getting that money back in the stabilization. And because this is happening, if if we go for an override or the special town meeting, it would be the first week of September. Because by then we would be into the 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 new fiscal year, July, August and 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 a bit of September. We won't even be one quarter. Into the year. There's no need to be using the stabilization fund in that first quarter. At all. So even if an override doesn't pass or for some reason we don't even request the uh the override. Um if we get, thi- this can be amended at the fall. Budget and nobody wants to use stabilization funds. We know this is not an ongoing. This is not sustainable. We're not going to use. What we're gonna three hundred in this year and next year we use another four hundred thousand and keep this going. We can't, we can't. The only reason we can get this in here and use it for this first time is that we're hoping that cash and an override will come in and take its place. This is a, this is a Band-Aid to get us to that decision in Sep- in September. So it's a placeholder. The likelihood, I mean, we can't, so so there we are. If it doesn't pass, we're not going to be using it. And if it does pass, we're not going to be using it. But in order to have a balanced budget, we need to have it in there. It's a little crazy, but that is kind of the way it is. Um in the meantime, to, I mean, we we took very, we took it very seriously, this. We shouldn't be hiring because we don't know what's going, what's going to happen. We don't want to hire people to lay them off. So um. I think the way we were, we are like. We talked about making a concerted effort that all vacant positions would be evaluated and replacements would be delayed wherever possible. There are some that you have to replace them right away, certain safety ones or certain ones related to uh departments where you you just can't. Go without that position. You have to replace them quickly. Others, um we would put down uh maybe just a. Foot dragging, what is slowdown of some sort. Paul Benjamin spoke the other night about, yeah, too bad you're hitting these particular departments are rolling. Uh it 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 rolling um. Oh.
Vacancy rate.
But yeah, thank you. That would, that makes a lot of sense, but you can't put that in the budget. You can't say, well, we're gonna take it out of this department and then we'll switch to that department.
That can be done in practice.
In practical purpose, and we we can put this into practice. And this is the, this is Lauren and Mike's area more than more than mine, but they put that into practice where there will be more of a slowdown. And filling some positions, especially if they are the ones that are most likely to. Of being uh to not be continued if we need to make. Major adjustments in the budget. So there'll be uh, so I think that was a good idea to look at the vacancies um differently. And I think that's that's going to happen and just as um just as it saved us money in twenty. Five, that same kind of policy will save us money going into twenty six. Um the idea that uh we already had for the twenty six budget, there are no new positions in that budget and there are no additional hours and that will continue. And uh certainly considering whether reduced hours might work for a position. Um the these should all be considered. So when a when a position becomes vacant, be- beginning with the ones that are vacant, that were identified Monday night. This kind of evaluation would take place and you will, we will experience a savings that. That we don't necessarily need to build into the budget to show it right now. Because we just need to kind of roll and get through to the point where we can, where we can craft this a little bit better.
Linda, is it, I mean, that's that's a lot. Just what you've talked about so far. So is it worth just kind of hitting a pause and checking in with. The Finance Committee and the rest of Select Board just to. See. Thoughts, and I know you've got more.
You're the chair.
I'll start and then we'll just go down. Alright, so um. When I. Looked at some of the numbers originally the other day. It was my understanding from like our um. The um finance finance uh management team that talks. Um that this is where we were going with, we were already using the ambulance funds and this is kind of where we were going. With some of that. My biggest concern was is the cutting of. The, because it keeps being listed as ambulance staff. And I know that ambulance staff is the fire, is the staff that's needed for the full-time fire department that we have. So that is my biggest concern is to make sure that money got over there. Now. I, yes, I'm not happy about uh having to cut any of the budgets. But I do know from everyone talking that's looked like the direction that the whole group was talking about at the. Finance management team. So that's, I was trying to understand where these numbers were coming from at first. I see that um the next thing and 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 what I was worried about is if the stabilization did fail. It's gonna just cut the fire department in half. That was the concern. Um. The other thing is I do have a big, big concern about the using any money from stabilization and everybody's known. I've always had a concern about that. Um I've had a concern about that when we used it before for the fire, but it was for a certain partic- we used it and we said it was for a particular reason. The other time we tried to use it for um pieces of equipment or capital and each time I voted no. Every single time I've always voted no because the stabilization is important. And our triple bond rating is very important to us. And what happened is already we are cutting. Things are tight and we have to do what we have to do and things are tight, but we've cut into our OPEP, which is one of the big things that helped us with our triple A bond rating. We now cut it, we've used last year's and to use any stabilization to fund a um. To fund an operating budget is a big no-no. It will look bad and there will be. Less of a chance that we'll get a good rating when we need to do it again, especially with a DPW coming. So those are big concerns of mine of of that bond rating. So yes, it is a big concern of having, using any stabilization to fund. The operating. So that is just, that is, those are my concerns. I've always had the stabilization as a concern. So I'm going to pass it down.
You wanted to pay or making the suggestion of how much taken out of stabilization? Two hundred and?
Three twenty.
So look at your sheet on the stabilization fund now and then. Three hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and four. That's down two hundred and thirty two thousand.
I don't see where you have the one.
Okay, oh, I got you ready. I got, I got.
No, 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 one eighty for the um. For the um, and that was in the select board.
Yeah, we did, we stopped at the three twenty eighty. That's the three twenty.
Oh, you didn't do the one eighty either.
No, we haven't talked about that.
So there'd be three hundred and twenty K out of stabilization. So and this would be taking it out of there with no override, correct, that's the. The whole thought of taking this out of stabilization with no override.
Till we get to the point where we need it, is what.
But it's gonna be voted out.
So it would have to be voted out.
Yes, obviously.
If it was a no for an override, then after it would be definitely using this three twenty, it it wouldn't have.
No, you'd be laying off of people.
So you'd be laying off the people, but then after, what would we be doing as to the town? To trying to or getting our stabilization fund being back, which would be an override to supplement the. This money that we're taking, right, so we would have to do an override anyway, either we take out the three hundred and twenty to do in the stabilization. Or. Whatever's needed to balance our budget, if we don't use it, we'd be laying off people, but if. We'd have to still fill in that number with an override, so it almost looks like either way, the putting that money back into stabilization. Use the last thing for an override. Right, in in a way, that's what it seems like, it's like, if we use it, okay, great, but we still have to put that money back in the stabilization.
A timing issue that Peter's talking about, right?
We do it at the October town meeting. We would, we would do it right, we would do it right away at the special town meeting in October that we always have, we, when we amend these budgets at town meetings. We'd go into town meeting and we'd take that three twenty right out of there. But we have a balanced budget now, we would, we would put the whole three twenty right back into stabilization at the October town meeting. Either way.
Does the special, special town meeting would happen, say, in September, so it would be a normal special town meeting. We sometime in mid-October, end of October. We need that town meeting to do whatever the town decides in September. And in either event, the money would not be spent, obviously.
Yeah, so our amended budget special town meeting will show no use of.
So what do we have for numbers right now that we're at for stabilization, what are we at, one point?
One point three.
Lead, so that was put us to one.
Stabilization was one point three or one point seven?
No, I think it's one point three.
After, after the uh after the use.
So it brings us on to one, and what are we looking for for a number to bring our stabilization back up to?
Well, step ten, we'd love to be ten percent, two point three, really, we'd like it to get there.
What's the current stabilization balance, I thought it was one point seven?
It's it's lower than that, um one point three.
Yeah, I think it's around one point three, close to one point four somewhere around.
Great budget.
Right now it says balance after special town meeting, one point seven.
That is.
So I wasn't crazy.
We're looking for a minimum of two, right, so. Are we gonna be doing an override just to fulfill our stabilization and then after?
No.
We're gonna go.
Talk Monday night.
Okay, we're gonna talk about this a little bit. Two parts, okay, so there'd be a two-part thing. Um with that, because that would be my concern is that, but either way, we're gonna be doing an override to fulfill the money that we spent. This year for all the things that we've been doing, the. The pay rates, the the unions, the 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 spending that we've been doing, we're playing catch-up and I still think it was a. You know, we should have thought about this or seen this ahead of time. That we're using this money and, you know, asking for an override. To pay for all these things and then after um, you know, what's the percentage of, would we be going for an override? Is this gonna be uh an uh a forever override that we're doing for this money?
I think in in the defense, the 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 plan, you know, we we took a million dollars out of stabilization basically to fund. A full-time fire department and ambulance.
And free cash.
But but I'm just saying, a million dollars.
Yes.
We 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 basically have spent for that in that endeavor. So we went from, so it's not like, I understand.
Wasn't a surprise, it it.
It wasn't, not just a surprise, it was, it was the expectation that it was gonna be replenished. So it was, it has less to do with the situation we're in, has less to do with. Some of these raises and all these other things, it's more to do with, we depleted. A lot of the money that we could have had.
The expectations of getting beat back, that I understand, there were no attached there, but it didn't happen.
And also understanding that now going forward. We haven't, you know, we're not going to a part-time fire department. Cause we can go and go to a part-time fire department and we don't need override, we'll have money for stabilization, we'll have our all these things. But we all have to understand, we gained something out of it, it's it's not all. All losing and and all of this management, there was a, there was a, there was kind of a plan towards this.
Yeah, and it just didn't pan out.
It it didn't pan out, but we're also not rolling back.
Right.
That's right.
Yeah, we're not rolling back, so a substantial amount, you know, we're talking about three, four, probably four hundred thousand to five hundred thousand dollars a year. That we're keeping with the fire department.
Yeah, and I think generally to Amy's point. You know, people are supportive of that, I I I don't, I don't know anybody who wants us to go backwards in terms of our fire coverage.
But both are ready for an override or for spending uh two million dollars for the schools. And then after, weren't we thinking about having an override for a new fire truck anyway?
We did that.
We did.
We did. But that would be, okay, that exclusion, but it's it's still money that's.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's the overrides of overrides, overall, you know, more of these overrides as to um. You know, people like to live in this town because they can afford it, but now, you know, will we be able to, I mean. The the overrides, the the pay increases, the unions, this, all of these things, um. You know, and I understand what the call is and everything else, but most people aren't getting their three percent raises throughout the year. But we keep on spending and I know things cost more um with inflation and the way how things are going. Um you know, I'm thinking about the uh the seniors or the people that are on those fixed incomes to having that. Override that aren't getting the salaries that all of us might be getting or having to be spending that. Uh I'm I'm really. Uh it's really tough for me to be able to think about this.
But the only. The only thing that I can suggest to you is that I I completely understand where you're coming from, but you mentioned seniors and. Uh that's one of the reasons why we would say, let them decide, they, do you want, do they want an ambulance coming to their house? Uh you know, I mean, do we want, do we want to be able to maintain this building properly as we should? And that's the idea of the override, they get to, they get to decide and they also, and they get to decide privately as well, because it has to go to a ballot vote. No, I don't want to do it, and that's fine, we will then make the adjustments here, but it goes back to the original discussion that we had, I think. Probably a month ago at this point. Um I think they deserve to know what what the consequences of of either one of those things are. If you want to add the money to your tax role, yeah, it's gonna cost you more, and we will tell you exactly what that cost is, if you don't. These are the things that we're gonna be doing without.
On the other side, when you're talking about if if none of this and the stabilization isn't used, um. You were talking about potential part-time layoffs or layoffs, you know, you know, perhaps. Um has it been thought as to? What departments or what areas would be laid off?
That'd be for something later that, you know, you don't want to go down that rabbit hole, but you're.
Right, no, I I understand that, but I'm also, you don't want to take away especially fire uh and and safety. But.
Just like we can't tell people what the special, special town meeting is gonna ask them to have for an override, the impact, we have to. That takes time to produce and the same thing would happen with layoffs and anything else. Right now, we're looking for a budget for two weeks from tomorrow night to get passed by the town.
Yeah.
And so it works.
I just wanna um Chief Spank Nables been patiently waiting there with his hand up, so it looks like he wants to jump in.
Oh, sorry. We have our finance committee's security measures on. Sorry, Mike, hold on. It's not, it's not bad, it's just, it's a security measure that I I blocked, I locked the meeting down, Mike, can you with us?
Yes. Thank you, Chair, um I just wanted to clarify so people understand, because there's been some. Information that I think is, it's not reflective of the fire department, so just quickly. I just want to tell you right now that there is, there are two firefighters on duty right. And that's twenty-four, seven, during the week, it's myself and the deputy chief that rounded out to four during the business hour. And that, that is responsible for all fire responses and second calls for ambulance service. For example, yesterday, our Hadley A one went out three times for second calls. Uh because we also had two emergency ambulances and then our Hadley Med one and Med two were out as well. So we are not getting any lower on the number of calls that we are having in town. And again, I I put this all together in that report I submitted to you. Uh the town can certainly decide what an acceptable level of risk is. But I I can tell you that folks are really happy to see the big yellow Hadley fire ambulance show up when Med one's not available. Especially when their loved one needs to be transported to the state. We have only been responding to second calls, that is why we are seeing, we're seeing exactly the number of calls that we anticipated when we put this plan together. And I was ta- I was tasked with putting together a phased approach for this, and that's what we have been doing. So we've, we estimated between a hundred and fifty, a hundred to a hundred fifty calls. And we've estimated around eighty to a hundred transports and we are, we are there. Uh we are still at the B L S level and we are still moving forward towards having A L S service. But that's with the firefighters that we have right now, so I just want to make sure everybody understood that, we're, we're still operating as is. Um and we're still gonna be rolling an ambulance out the door, are we looking at alternative ways of bringing additional revenue in? Yes, but we actually have an ambulance license right now, it's. It's not just throwing that license out the door and you just shut the doors with the ambulance, that's a, a bigger conversation. Uh with the select board and the public, in my opinion, so I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
Yeah, I I think everybody's on that same page, Mike, I understand that, I think this is more of a. Um it's a bigger picture about the use of stabilization funds at this point, so, but that, but thanks for for jumping in, so. Peter, you.
When it comes to the 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 borrowing, um. When does the red flag come up for the state or whoever's saying or where we're borrowing from? Okay, you are spending way too much money on your stabilization that lowers that bond rate.
When you have no plan is really the critical point, so. Sorry, give me a.
Not not the number, but okay.
It's more like, if you have no plan, right? So the way that they're looking at it is, I mean, the, think about it, your personal financial situation, right? You may um uh be purchasing a business or a second house or something like that. And you have an an a need for an interim bridge loan, right? Like you don't have the cash right now, but there's a way for you to borrow money for a short amount of time. That if you only were carrying that debt, like that would be really bad and you'd eventually run out of money. Um but if it was predicated on something else happening where you knew that money was coming in and you could pay that debt off, that's a plan, right? It's a, it's a plan that works, so the bank or somebody's gonna look favorably on that. And I think from a bond rating standpoint, it's a similar outlook, um if they come in and they see us. Expenses are higher than our revenues and we're chipping it away at our savings account year over year over year. And then they go and they interview the town administrator and 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 Linda and say, what's what's your plan? And they're like, well, we're, you know, kind of hoping that.
We're getting through.
Yeah, we're hoping maybe some revenue, well, they're not gonna like that and your bond rating's going down pretty quickly. But if it's part of an overall strategy, then we're still kind of okay, and I think that's.
And and that's, that's what we're, that's like when we cut those old path, but we have a plan, we know where, we know how we're going to make it out and with the uh. With the stabilization, using it here, we have a plan that we're gonna put it back.
And we're way ahead of of most of the state in the. Have been very prudent. And likewise, there's an article in here where we moved down of consent that we're putting away money for the um. Membrage for the filtration system, we need to apply that logic to everything that we're doing. That's what, if we go to an override, we need to have an override that says we're gonna put money aside for savings, for maintenance. And um.
And cuts aren't gonna, and cuts won't solve that.
Cuts aren't gonna solve that.
Yeah, cuts will fund, fund the maintenance reserve.
We've been fighting a losing battle against. Uh expenses that I also have to do with the cost of living going up so dramatically in the last five, ten years. And that's just what it is, and if we want to keep this town the way it is, then we're gonna have to. Um you know, we're gonna all have to, you know, dig a little deeper, um but. Personally, as long as that plan comes forward, that also recommendations and a plan for the next ten years to put aside money for. Maintenance to put aside so that we we fix the deficiencies of the way we've been running things. You know, we've been running them in order to keep taxes low, I mean, we've done, and we've had the benefit of that, but that kind of. It was fun while it lasted, but right now, we have to make an adjustment. We will still be, even with an override in this town, below all of the peers that we're in the middle of here. Okay, we will still have lower taxes in our town. And I have to say, you know, I see our potholes get fixed a lot faster than towns that are charging a lot higher, uh you know, uh annual fees.
Tax rate.
Tax rate, okay, um so I think we have a lot to be, to protect here. Okay, because when we start doing those types of cuts that these other towns have done, people in here are not gonna be happy. With that, and I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna come up with a plan between these committees. That's going to be, it's gonna cost us all money, but it is going to protect what we have now, and I think that's what is in the best interest of the town and the taxpayers. And I think the the employees that we have that are doing what I think is a great job.
And the only number that you could go down when it comes to moving things around, because before it was five hundred thousand. The the numbers that you were able to find or lower, that that number is the best is three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I understand, but before it was, Monday it was like bifurcated.
Yeah.
And I know you guys did a great job working as to, you know, the past couple days, working hard at this. And it was all, you know, so it's still three hundred and twenty thousand dollars to borrow from, or at three point, or sorry, one point seven. It would bring us to one point three eight.
Basically, the only, the only change really that's happened on this is we've taken out of the. Um ambulance, the couch, that's it, and so.
And we added. Oh, we added the open, yeah, so now we're gonna have two years of no them.
Right, but that, I guess, but the, from, from what we started with to where we are now, the only difference is, is the. Is the money we took out of the ambulance, so at this point, if we end up. Since we're not looking to change or help with the stabilizations. I don't think it is fair to just take from one department. We are only, and and if you're not.
Could just time out on that one, but when you go back to the beginning of the budget process, remember what the initial requests were, right? From all of the departments, so but so those, that already like happened at the front end of the process.
Right, right, but I'm talking about now, the only adjustment is in one.
But be, but because many of those other departments were already, I mean.
About two point three million dollars.
Yeah.
From their, from what they want, yes, from work, yeah, from everybody.
Right, and and that's the same with really, when you look at the fire department and ambulance.
They they were, there there's, those adjustments were across the board, I'm talking about the sh- the two sheets here, the difference. How do the others won't change the stabilization though, because we directed the stabilization to the ambulance and that's what we talked about. When we met in January, is that, remember the orange and the blue, that stabilization, we're bringing it in and we are going to handle the. Uh at, just as we had by article the earlier time, only we're bringing it into the budget, so. I mean, that's, that's just the way this one has worked out. Um.
And, and this is the last dance. We do like this. Basically, we're gonna never do this again.
Right.
Okay, but, but we're two days, this is it tonight. We need to do this. So we have a town meeting in a week. Or two, two weeks rather. And this is a placeholder. And I don't disagree in principle with what you're saying. I just don't know that we have the time to do it. And since it's a placeholder, you know, I can, uh, personally, I can support this just to move it forward right now because if it's happened.
It looks like we're only about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars away from the goal of getting it down to a hundred and forty thousand. That was what we were looking at. Um, yeah, on Monday night, a hundred and forty thousand out of stabilization at that point.
Looking at a hundred and forty thousand. These were, those were just numbers. This wasn't really, they weren't being worked out. This is like what if, what if, what if.
Well, yeah, a lot of this is what ifs. I mean, you know, we've, we've got, uh, you've got three hundred and, and twenty thousand. Obviously, next year that's gonna be here. The, it, it, you know, if we don't make changes in either revenue or, or the spending side, it'll be here again next year and, and-
No.
If, if, if it, I'm so sorry. No, y'all go ahead. Sorry. No, that's, we're, we are either going to have an override vote pass.
Right, right.
Or fail. If the override fails, right, and the town very clearly says, we understand that this means jobs and services, then we all will have to go back to the drawing board, take a look at the twenty-three million um, of spending and say, okay, we need to get that number down to X, but now it's going to be a more thoughtful, unpleasant, but it'll be a thoughtful process to say, okay, what services now? Are we going to eliminate, um, right, I mean, so it, it'll be much-
I guess my point was that the, you know, the expenses like the insurance and, you know, the, and, um, the higher wages. So those things are gonna continue to grow.
Right.
Honestly, and so, um, we'll be playing catch up and-
The amount of people that have to cover with that insurance will-
Right. If we lay people off.
Yeah, yeah.
That'll help drive down.
If you pass a robust future thinking override that includes operational catch up and some and money towards improving our stable and filling up our softness for stabilization. Filling up a special dedicated, um, account for revenue, you know,
Maintenance.
Maintenance. Okay. And, and then money to go into capital.
Yeah, we, we talked about building some pretty good guardrails to make sure that those, those, those funds remain intact.
That's what's being discussed and looked at. So that we have, when we go in front of the voters with a plan, it's gonna last us ten years. It will accommodate those changes that are happening.
Right, that's part of the SSTN when we get to the over.
Exactly. Now, if they turn that down, if we come up with something and, and whatever that magic number is, it's one lit up in different pots, okay? And they turn that down in October, we're gonna have to have a town meeting where they're gonna announce these are the following cuts that have to be made in the budget.
It's one point one million dollars.
Right. Okay, but that is only a one-year solution. The following year, we're gonna be right back where we were saying, oh, well, we now have more increases. So we need to cut two more positions or one more position. That is the thin end of the wedge, if there ever was one. And by the way, it does not include a plan to fill up the coffers of our stabilization. It doesn't give us the money to get back on track with OPEB. Doing it that way. Okay, that's the ultimate head in the sand solution, which is gonna be nothing for us. And by the way, twenty twenty-seven is gonna be worse than this. Coming up.
Yeah.
Because we have not felt here yet in any great way the effects of what's happening nationally with cutbacks at the national level and the trickle effect that's gonna have with different brands and different things in our community.
Now, what, what could happen, and we keep going back to, you know, anytime you've got an imbalance like this, you can increase revenue or you decrease expense, right? Two choices. Um, on the increased revenue side of things, that is where the work that's currently being done by the planning board, the economic development committee, trying to keep these conversations alive about zoning changes that could bring in additional revenue.
The excise model.
The, the excise taxes, the, the local, you know, that all could come to fruition. Um, but on the zoning side of it, you know, based on all the conversations, listening to the planning board, even if they were to vote changes now that, that allowed for additional development, you're years away from seeing that revenue. Um, but, but the good news is if that does happen and we, we do see positive revenue streams resulting from that down the road, well, then that helps put us, and, and you know, now, now there's much less pressure. Um, um, is spending side of things, you know, to keep, you know, we still wanna, you know, keep it, you know, reasonable. We don't wanna go spending money like crazy, but they're just what ifs right now is the problem.
Hammond's always been active in pursuing these stuff. That's why in, what, forty years? We have never had a single operational override. I don't know how many towns in the state.
Just live in North Hampton.
Yeah.
Like every week, it seems like.
Yeah, I think, I think to Paul's point, it, it costs money to run this town. And we have one of the lowest tax rates definitely around us and probably in the state, but I think we also have the, one of the highest level of services. And so how does, how does that work? How, how can we have such high levels of service and have a low tax rate? It, it's catching up with us is what's happening. So we do have to do what we're talking about. The thing, the thing I want to just say about, you, we talk about, you know, they were mentioning about wages and raises and things. You know, we did a wage study for a reason. Because we learned that so many people, hardworking people in our town were severely underpaid, you know, some, some almost fifty percent. And so we did this study and we did it based on, to gather data to really understand the entire deal. So, so these wages where we are today, we're really rectifying wrongs we did in the past. Because we were really taking advantage of some people who really love this town, who really love this job. And now we're on level with what they probably should be. And we, I know from my, my business, hiring people, retaining them and understanding the wages, you know, whatever I, we used to do, we can't do that anymore to keep people to operate our businesses. We have to adjust to the new paradigm. I don't like it. Obviously. And as a town person, obviously I don't want, you know, as one of the highest, if not the highest taxpaying family in this town, it's gonna affect me more than everybody else significantly. I don't like it, but I understand it. And I understand where that came from. Mike's already pointed out that even at this budget, he, this was from the beginning, the first meeting, he pointed out, even where you guys made those cuts, it's not sustainable. The fact is, is that even with the stabilization, where we, we do, we keep everything copacetic, we're still laying off people, even with stabilization. But the, the fact is, is that, and so we're going into a, into a budget that's already broken. So I, 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 I don't know, you know, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And the, the last thing is, is that, well, a couple of things. In deferring OPEB now for two years, you know, it, it goes back to, I think we had a conversation about the enterprise funds and really running some of the water and sewer at deficits and depleting those. And we're doing the same thing over again. Yeah, we're at the seventy-five percentile. We're patting ourselves on the back, but that could be very short-lived. And the, the, the fact is, is that we got here for a reason. We're at the seventy-five percent for a reason. And, and I'm not saying, you know, some of that OPEB could be, we can make that up, but it's just not a good philosophy going forward. To have this philosophy that we're, we're in a great shape here so we can take it from here and, and, and do it.
It doesn't just stop. I mean, right, seventy-five percent, the, the money we have in there, uh, it's increasing this year without our making a contribution. So, I mean, we are-
No, it's compounding.
We're, we're going up and we do have a plan for when the Hampshire County retirement. That we, that we order those. So as Molly was saying, we have a good, we have a plan. It's not just like we've moved.
My, my point is just in general.
Yeah.
In general, it's not a good philosophy. Whether it's OPEB or something else, it's not a good thing to go and not sustain some of these things that we decided on, on an annual, annual basis, and we're pulling back. And then we'll go to back for a third year and then a fourth year and so on and so forth. It's just, it's just not a, a good thing.
Well, I don't think we're doing it because we think it's a, a fun thing. It's, it's like somebody that has to decide, do I eat today or do I pay my electric bill? It, it's the same philosophy.
Yeah. But I, 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 I think what I, what I'm hearing Sheridol say is we're doing it now because we have to. It's just not a sustainable program to, to continue to do that.
Or look for something else next year. And, and the last thing is, is that, you know, we talked about bond rating. And the, the thing is, is that we're cur, we're currently where we are at bond, bond rating is very good. And we're, we're doing a great job because we, because of all the good things we've done and probably all the money we've saved because of wages and all these other things. But the thing is, is that we have to go and get to a point where we're between five to ten percent of our budget in terms of our stabilization balance. And that's gonna take roughly a million dollars if we, if we, especially if we take from stabilization now. So the fact is, is that that money's got, you know, that money's gotta get replenished pretty quickly, especially if we're gonna be borrowing or, you know, the thing is that we-
In one year, next spring will be our bond.
Yeah.
And, and, and the thing is, is that the fire truck, we haven't even bought it yet. That, that bond, that bond is still not really there in terms of what we're, we're, we're gonna be paying for. So that, that affects the bond rating for that, any other equipment and the TPW building. So in, there's a, there's a lot of factors that, and, and I get it. I, I don't like spending money. I'm the business person. I'm all about, you know, keeping, keeping expenses to a degree. But we're at the point where we have to go and realize that you can only cut so much. And you have to go and decide on, on making those decisions on really investing in, in our town and, and making sure we're financially sound.
And I think what Mike said is we have to let the people decide. Which is what town meetings all about.
And the advantage to way, letting them decide later rather than now.
Right.
Are we gonna do an override now?
Cause they can be influenced.
We will by fall, by the time we would be, we'll, we'll hopefully we'll have a good handle on what our July one pre-cash is. That will be a factor. We will see what the state is up to. I'll see whether they pass the increase in, uh, the rooms and meals excise caps. And that has the potential of bringing Hadley an extra up to five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, these are things that will make a difference in, in so many ways. So, I mean, so it's, it's almost unfair to say right now we'll go for the override because it looks like we're short and we're using the stabilization fund. We, we need to know what the picture looks like is in, in August, September. And by then we are working on projections over the next few, I was trying to project ahead the few years, next few years in both, uh, revenues and in expenses. And, um, and we'll have time to plan on, on what it is to have, that how does Hadley wanna spend its money? Does it, how much more does it wanna put into this kind, the kind of services? Many people, most people are very accustomed to the services we provide. And how many times we, you know, we hear about, oh, the roads, they're so much better in Hadley and then, and then in North Hampton and Amherst, even at a smaller tax rate. This doesn't fit together, folks. I mean, we have, we're paying for those roads. That's part of what's happening here. Um, and those, that, that very department, um, that makes the road so great is probably pretty high up on having to have cuts out of it because it's large. So when we, if we wanna sustain the services, then we have to sustain the funding for it. That's not my decision or, you know, that, that's, that's the people's decision. And what we wanna do is hold it together until they get a chance to vote on it. And that's what we're asking for in this budget, in this budget. Hold it. We will cut back where we can. Let's put the, uh, let's put the stabilization in there to get us through. We're gonna yank it out at fall town meeting. Either way, we could, we could have left it in for all of twenty-six because we're so nicely balanced now and worry about it in twenty-seven, but that is really unfair. If we, if the override doesn't pass, we are not going to rely on stabilization. We're really going to have to take that out. We're not going to wait till twenty-seven to make changes to operations. We have to bring that back and begin it in twenty-six. It's going to have to begin in October. Uh, but give us a chance to get there and give people a chance to speak up and say what, what they wanna do and whether they, what they-
So I'd like to say a lot of our discussion here is whether or not we need more money in an override. That's something we need to talk about more and we're gonna do that down the road. What we had talking about tonight is how we're gonna pass this budget. And my suggestion is either, I originally suggested no stabilization because that's what I believe in, and I think so. Or I suggest we pass the one that was original, the five hundred. Because I don't feel that just taking from that area, cause you're not the, I, I was trying to put off the three percent like we have in the past, like what we used to do um, with those increases. We did the colas in the fall. I was looking to do not, to not give it, but to do it in the fall like we did before, push those as a line item off to compensate in the fall. But I didn't, you know, that's not including the firefighters' compensation. So if we go along and say, okay, we're gonna do, we're not gonna push the compensation of the one eighty, right? That's the extra three percent in the ex, the, the colas or the extra. Okay, if we're not going to push that to the fall, then we have to add back in for the, the firefighters that we did not push.
Firefighters, try and add that three percent by the way. I mean, they're, they're-
They're all in there.
They've had it for-
There's no change for the firepower.
Well, we took it, the three hundred.
Those were expenses. Those are expenses.
Well, they, that's not exactly what we talked about at the finance meeting. We were looking to- No, 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 no. That's, that's what's, that is, I'm talking about when we met up at town hall and you said that, that three hundred and ninety-three would have to be more like four hundred and fifty if you added in their three percent.
Their three percent is in the select board's budget.
For three percent.
You can, um,
Cause, cause I think that's-
Just like-
Fire side.
Well, that's not what was discussed before when we talked about-
You can choose to underfund the wages. You can choose to not fund that line if you want and fix it in the fall. We just can't not create that. So like what you just said, they can get them July one and, and we're all set, but we, we absolutely have to fix it.
That's what we've done in the, in the past.
You can choose to do that if you want, but-
But I'm just, I, so, so I was just making sure that we have everyone covered because when we talked before, we were looking at moving more. I, yeah, because when, when it was the, when we talked at our-
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
Financial team meeting, we had a discussion.
Right.
And how you would move that.
Right. But, but that's not what's happening now. So they're in there.
Okay, so they weren't in the budget book before. So they weren't in the one eighty. We talked about moving more money over for them.
I, I think what Amy's talking about is when we first were addressing the fact that, and, and I could be wrong, so jump in. When we were first addressing, like what are we going to do, right? When we saw that in order to go fully in-house, Mike was talking about, and, and so the chief had his, his multiple budgets. And so one of the, the options that was discussed was that if part of the, uh, you know, a large part of the reason that we needed to draw from stabilization had to do with the fact that we had hired three personnel, one option theoretically was we could like roll that back. And I think we, we kinda pretty quickly came to the conclusion that nobody wanted to do that, that we recognized that they were, as Mike just said, part of the fire department staff. So this budget now doesn't reflect those positions not being paid. It's in there. They found-
We were talking about going forward with up into, into A and getting a override for that.
Right.
Sounded like that's, that didn't-
Yeah, I don't, I don't, don't think anybody was interested in.
And we had a higher figure then too, because we were, uh, trying to recognize the impact that it has on benefits.
Right, right. So, I mean, I just wanna make sure. So that's right for Amy, that, that, that's in there. They're in there. We're not touching fire personnel.
Fire personnel are all in there. There's no layoffs and they have, their three percent is in there.
They're in there. Okay, so that only, this, so, so my, the only difference in the, between the five hundred and the three hundred is in the ambulance and what you're, what we're, what we're talking about- In the ambulance and what you're, what we're, what we're talking about. Things, things such as all their. Items that they need, such as gas, uh, emergency supplies, all that kind of stuff. I, I believe that in my feeling that we do not need a, um. I do not like the stabilization, but if you're going to pass a stabilization, you might as well cut, you should. Not cut from one spot. You should, you should take, you take the whole thing. You, you should take the ambulance as is.
The same. But you want to go back to our original recognition.
I don't like the stabilization and I'm not, I'm not denying it. And I tried to give some ideas on how not to use the stabilization. That's what you have.
But then we're increasing them up. We're going to use from stabilization. Why would, why would we go, that's a regressive.
Why wouldn't you want to at least improve the situation?
Yeah.
And you're only taking it from one spot, one little spot.
What, what, what we're saying, we're saying at this point in this juncture of with it being two weeks away. For us to go and get to this point, to all the hard work that everybody's put in. To now go and say, let's, let's dump, let's blow it up and go back to where it was.
Well, this was on Monday's meeting. This is where they originally had, I tried to give them an idea and out. To not use stabilization. I was looking at that. That was just Monday.
But they took that under advisement and they found a way to cut it down, to reduce it substantially.
And, and, and to some degree, I think your plan can still somewhat. Happen to some degree with, even with this, with this lower amount. It just, it can't be recognized with the way that you see it.
Yeah. And so Amy, I've just, so. If, if, if we're keeping all the personnel in the fire department. Are you worried that there's services that are going to be cut now because of this two hundred and whatever?
Well, you're saying we're not even going to really need it. If you're saying it's not even going to be used. I, I'm just saying, I, I'm looking at the budget and I'm, I'm looking at where. We can try to hold back and I'm just do not like the fact is that we're cutting just from one area.
Yeah, but I think that, that I don't, I can invoke what Peter said earlier though. I, I. I mean, if we, if we wanted to extend that to say, well, then why don't we go back then and we got one point. Seven million in stabilization, so.
That, I'm just, but I wanted to point out where that change was and where, what was affecting, what was that one thing that was affecting?
Yeah, but what, what, what harm, I mean. Is there particular harm that you're concerned about that's going to come to fire services right now with that? Money that's being proposed.
They still have the two ambulances. They still have the personnel for them. They do have a supply onboard. And they may be able to, between the fuel that they have for their fire trucks that they may not always need. They'll be able to run certain ambulance runs. They'll be able to do some transfers, which we do get paid for. So there'll be some revenue against them. And this is really only to buy us time for the electorate to say, okay. We agree, we have to do something. And we have to improve the situation or no, we're going to blow up the town as it is and we're, you know, just start making cuts. Okay, but I think improving that situation. At least to cut it to three twenty. And again, it's a placeholder. They're not even going to touch the money because it's going to be very early in the fiscal year. When we're going to get to that decision point. And, and I think it makes more sense after they've done all this work in the last couple of days to then say, you know. I think if, if the chief had gotten on and said, hey. We're not going to run a single ambulance run because of the way this is going. Then I think we could say, well, maybe we need to relook at this, but I don't think that's what's happening. I think for a few months, it'll be able to get by. And then we're going to have to make a hard decision, which is fund this thing properly, fund this building properly. And start putting money away for a rainy day, which we've been eating away. Kind, and then, you know, I just think that we should, you know, follow those, I hope you can turn on this. All right. Need a recommendation?
You guys got.
Okay, I'm making a motion that we approved. What do I call this fiscal?
Article eight.
Article eight, I'm sorry.
As presented.
As presented.
For the one dated the fifteenth, for the one dated the.
The one dated sixteen, which is three hundred, which includes the stabilization fund reduction.
Second.
On favor.
Hi. What we got? Were you, were you four? Four, we have three.
You have three.
You're both. Post.
You're opposed.
Yep.
Okay, and are you, just for, you know, you oppose because we're not using five hundred thousand from stabilization?
Or for two different stabilization.
They're using any at stabilization. Okay.
Well, I, I needed to talk, this, when we were talking, it was idea when we were talking about ways. And so the, the, the budget is here as presented, so it's either we use. It's either we're doing it this way or I do not want to use stabilization.
Okay.
I will make a motion to recommend article eight as presented.
Okay, motion made by Randy, seconded by Jane. Jennifer will call vote.
We'll call the Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you. And now we're free to move on to the next foreign article. Article nine is the enterprise fund budgets. Um, Linda, would you like to address that as well? Oh, yes, oh, the third page here, yes.
Yes.
Enterprise fund budgets. Are, um, things are exactly as presented in the budget book. There have been no changes. I think finance committee approved this the other night. Uh, and uh, they are all running. Down on enterprise funds and, and this is the best we can do within the rates as they stand right now. And this is something to be handled at a future time. But um, as it is, these budgets, although they are handled within the uh, within the enterprise funds, revenues and reserves. I will need finance committee and support to vote on this one as well.
I will make a motion to recommend article nine.
Motion made by Randy, seconded by Jane. Jennifer will call vote.
We'll call the Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you.
Didn't kind of actually vote on this.
We have a motion. Thought you did last.
Motion, we, you know, motion for eight, right? I'm sorry, I'll make a motion that we recommend. Uh, article nine, enterprise fund budgets, water, sewer, water and.
Second.
First and a second on favor.
Articles ten, eleven, and twelve are all local options for excise tax, no tax and over. Tax. Um, oh, I'm sorry, David Cole has his hand up.
I was just going to say before we vote, um, could I actually make a motion to delete article twelve from the warrant? Uh, which is just the excise tax option.
Why?
Yeah, absolutely. So, uh, you know, we're going to ask the voters to potentially uh, increase their taxes for a. One point five, two million dollar override, possibly, who knows? Uh, we're going to ask them to increase their taxes for a twenty million dollar DPW facility. Um, and then now we're going to possibly tack on an additional five percent onto their already existing excise taxes on top of. All that, um, in addition to the yearly two and a half percent. So the. Meals tax, when it was originally passed, the idea was that most people, well, a lot of that revenue was transient people coming through town. UMass employees, people coming here to shop, dine, whatever else. Those people would be taking the vast majority of the hit. Obviously, if you eat in town, you, you know, as a resident, you're paying that as well. Uh, same with the uh, room tax. Granted, most of the people that are staying in town are not Hadley residents. So. And granted, I know that affects the farmer's business and other people's businesses as well and our guests. But unlike those taxes, the excise tax affects Hadley residents particularly. So it's another large jump, a large increase that we're adding on to their bills in addition to the DPW and an override. And the regular two and a half percent increase.
Can I just ask Sue, um. Sue, or maybe, maybe Linda knows too, um, the amount that we might gain by the excise tax was relatively.
My, it says forty three thousand dollars referee. Oh, let me, let me unmute her.
Let me ask.
I'm unmuting her.
A pre-question.
Yeah, it will be about forty, around forty thousand dollars. Because it's not five percent added to your excise tax bill. It's five percent added to the valuation of the vehicle. Which then the, the state charges twenty five dollars per thousand of value.
Okay, thanks.
I just, I just wanted an explanation on that. So, thank you.
Yeah, my, my position on this hasn't changed since the other night either. Um, I, you know, David pretty much echoed what, what I said, um. Word for word, so I'm, I'm, I'm pretty, I feel that, you know, we're asking a lot already of the townspeople and this is such a nominal amount anyway. That, um, I don't think we should add, you know, put additional pressure if it's not going to get as much.
Yeah, on the, on the one hand, you could pick the argument that let them decide, but also it's one more article and. I mean, yeah, and for the amount of money because of the.
Your vote was zero four.
Yeah.
Y'all were all against it.
We're all against.
So what David's suggesting is that we just take it. Completely and not even put it in front of ten.
I, I agree. Standing up as the moderator in front of the town. Um, given what we've already gone through in the discussion, it's going to be a long discussion just to get to this point. Um, I think if we then hit him with the five percent excise tax, it's going to really sour the meeting. And it's going to be, just add to the contention at that point. So I. From standing up there watching mood of the people, I would strongly advise that five percent not even be brought up.
All right, Dave, um, David, do you want to make a, a motion?
Yeah, I, I made the motion. I just needed a second.
Second. Okay. Okay, motion made by Davies, Dave, Davy. David seconded by Amy. Jennifer will call vote.
We'll call the Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yep.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Okay, article twelve to be removed.
All right.
So then we go back to the two remaining local options, article ten. Uh, which is to increase the local option for meals. For point seventy-five percent. Uh, this is, this, um, Linda and I worked the town council on this. You don't, you don't have to say, Linda, you know what I'm about to say. Um. This has not been adopted by the Commonwealth yet, but it is on the upcoming legislature uh, session. And so we work with town council to have the language so that. If it's passed next week, we get it. If it's passed four months from now, we've already approved it, so we can just immediately start collecting. So we won't be held up by waiting for fall town meeting or potentially next May's town meeting. Yes.
But if the state does not pass it, then the town does not get to pass it.
Correct. Well, we would already have passed it and we would just sort of live perpetually in hopes that they would one day pass it again.
Okay.
Because this has been on the books. I've been carrying this as a warrant article for two years now. But that we've sort of been assured that this year it's going to hit the books and we, we would like it to for the town as, uh. Y'all heard earlier that the potential for both of these articles is a five hundred thousand dollar increase. We have, we have the opportunity to see that return. Over the course of the time, over the year.
It's a good way to track how fast your legislators work.
Exactly.
Always. Always a good idea to, to let them know that you sure like that idea.
Motion to recommend article ten.
Motion made by Randy, seconded by Jane. Jennifer will call vote.
We'll call the Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
And article eleven is for the room tax, exact same thing, only it's a one percent instead of point seven five.
Second then. Motion made by Jane, seconded by Amy. Jennifer will call vote.
We'll call the Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you. Article thirteen is a planning board by law. Um, the planning board actually did uh, recommend this four zero one with one absent member. Um, they'll be discussing this more at the meeting. Article fourteen, also planning board for the central. Senior overlay district and the rural senior overlay district. Again, they approved this one four zero one with one member absent. And then, sorry, there, it's really long, so I'm just scrolling through here.
Just like the rest of us.
Okay, good.
Okay. Okay, so we had article sixteen then?
Article fifteen is the amended senior overlay. And again, this is four zero one. There are three, there are three articles for uh, the planning. All recommended four zero one with the one abstention for an absent member. Next is article sixteen. This is the muted municipal tax payment agreements by law. Um. This is to codify how Linda collects and handles, um. Tax payments for um, pack, tax payment agreements. That we enter agreements with people who are behind or other reasons like that. So that is. Codifying what Linda already does. This is a statute from the state that we need to adopt for town council. So I would ask you to make a recommendation.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made by Jane and seconded by Randy. Jennifer will call vote.
We'll call the Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you. And then article seventeen starts our CPA.
This one's on the consent agenda.
This is article seventeen and eighteen are both consent agenda items. Next year we'll partner them all up together, but for this year. I didn't want to move everything around. Um, so article seventeen, this is a yearly article that comes forward. And I would ask her to approve it.
Motion to recommend article seventeen.
Motion made by Randy, seconded by Amy. Jennifer will call vote.
We'll call the Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yep.
Thank you.
If I may, I have one question on this one. We removed article two, I think it was, because that a hundred and fifty thousand dollar amount in here.
Article six, yeah.
And, and I meant article six. I, I just may need a refresher. I see dollar amounts in here. So why is this on the consent, but we took article six off? Because they both reflect dollar amounts.
These are CPA funds. I think that they're non-controversial. They, I, I can't say anything better.
What are you asking about?
Article seventeen.
We're mandated.
Was the uh, the first one of the consent agenda? Yes, yes, I have the old version. Yeah, so that is where they just allocate the funds to the, to the different.
We're not spending it.
Yeah, it's just, it's putting it in its right home. Okay. Article seventeen is um, to extend CPA experience for the historical commissions tours. Um, they're just asking to give them uh, two additional years. This is again, a fairly. Non-controversial item recommended by CPA nine zero zero. Finance committee voted on this uh, Monday night four zero zero.
Motion to recommend article eighteen.
Second.
Second. Motion made by Randy, seconded by Jane. Jennifer will call vote.
We'll call the Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you. Article nineteen is a preservation of a deed and mortgage from the seventeenth century. I'm not. Huang Huang? Is that right? Huang Huang mortgage, mortgage. Um, this was recommended by the CPA six zero zero. There were members absent that night in case people are wondering, what's a nine C? Not the nine like the others and finance committee approved four zero zero.
Motion to recommend article nineteen.
Motion made by Randy, seconded by Amy. Roll call vote.
We'll call the Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, article twenty is the CPA, CPA Old Hadley Cemetery fence. As I understand, this fence has been damaged and needs to be repaired.
Um, it's going to be replaced.
Replaced. I'm sorry, that's right. It's down completely. Removed, okay. So again, CPA voted on the six zero zero, finance committee four zero zero.
Motion to recommend article twenty.
Second. Motion made by Randy, seconded by Amy. Roll call vote.
We'll call the Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, article twenty-one is the CPA North Hadley Hall bail. Uh, Article twenty-one is the CPA North Hadley Hall Bell. This is to build a display out at the North Hadley Fire Station to display the bell from the Old Village Hall in North Hadley. Six zero, uh, CPA four zero Finance Committee.
Motion to recommend Article twenty-one.
Second.
Motion made by Randy, seconded by Amy, roll call vote.
Roll call that Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you.
Article twenty-two.
Thank you.
Oh.
You, okay, Article twenty-two is CPA for the Golden Court Doors Replacement. They, uh, had done the windows, they are back to do the doors. This is for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It is recommended by the CPA six zero zero and FinCom four zero zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Jane, seconded by Randy, Jennifer Rollcall vote.
Roll call that Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Hey, uh, Article twenty-three is CPA First Church Steeple for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is for a parent's steeple that I believe is leaning here, there is towards Lord Wilcox's office. Um, so CPA five zero one Finance Committee four zero zero.
Was there, in the five zero one, was that an absent or an extension?
I cannot answer that. Okay, we'll have CPA, maybe you'll be there on the twenty-third and she can.
That's it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Jane, seconded by Amy, roll call vote.
Roll call that Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you. Article twenty-four is the Catherine Kelly APR. This is a combination of CPA funding and TBR funding, which is transferred to the Rubs Fund. It is referenced by Nav, and we'll have it displayed for the town. CPA recommended nine zero zero, conservation recommended three zero zero, and FinCom recommended four zero zero.
Motion to recommend Article twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made by Randy, seconded by Amy, Jennifer Rollcall vote.
Roll call that Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith and this, and Parsons.
Yes.
Again, Article twenty-five is the Market Riley APR. This is again a CPA and a TBR fund. Uh, APR.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made by Jane, seconded by Amy, Jennifer Rollcall vote.
Roll call that Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Article twenty-six, the Topper Family Nominee Trust, CPA and TBR. Conservation was eight zero one, CPA was three zero zero, FinCom was four zero zero.
Motion to recommend Article twenty-six.
Motion made by Randy, seconded by Amy, Jennifer Rollcall vote.
Roll call that Phil.
Yep.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you. And finally, Article twenty-seven, the Estate of Joseph Kosky. CPA and TBR. Uh, this was CPA nine zero zero, conservation three zero zero, and FinCom four zero zero.
Motion to recommend Article twenty-seven.
Motion made by Randy, seconded by Amy, Jennifer Rollcall vote.
Roll call that Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Parsons, uh, Nevin Smith.
Yeah.
Yep.
And Parsons.
Oh. Yes.
Sorry, I had plenty of practice and got a gloss there. Article twenty-eight is CPA bylaw changes. This is to bring the bylaws in the current terms to match what they're actually doing now. Uh, it's been approved by council and, uh, the CPA recommends this. Motion to approve zero zero.
Second.
Motion made by Jane, seconded by Amy, roll call vote.
Roll call that Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith. Yes. And Parsons.
Yeah.
And then Article twenty-nine is the DPW building, city, or building. And
Right.
Really still on the warrant at this time, so.
Right, so are we, um, in light of the conversation that took place earlier, are we leaving it on now, give them time and?
That's what I understood was going to happen, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just making sure everybody's on the same page with that. Yeah. Okay. So no vote, obviously.
So if that's funded, I mean, it asks you to close your warrant.
Motion to close warrant.
Second.
Motion made by Jane, seconded by Randy and Amy. Jennifer Rollcall vote.
Roll call that Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yeah.
And then finally, I'm gonna ask you to approve your warrant for signing this month.
What?
I'm gonna ask you to approve the warrant for signing. Didn't we do that by closing? That's just closing it. This is separate action.
Second.
Motion made by Amy, seconded by Jane, Jennifer Rollcall vote.
Roll call that Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
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 Nevin Smith.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
One thing I wanted to add, um, as the moderator, in the past, I've been open to moving more articles around to accommodate people. I'm not gonna do it on this one. What it is, is what it is.
Yeah.
So are we taking?
Nobody needs to worry about that.
Are we taking the, uh, membranes and putting them where they belong or leaving them upfront?
I, I believe you voted the membranes off to be voted separately.
Yeah, yeah, but they'll keep their number.
Yeah, there's something to be argued, let's say. It's just not on the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'm not moving it.
Okay.
Good decision, Mr. Moderator.
You're supposed to say so there after. Okay, um, so Finance Committee, I'm just looking, I don't think there's anything. You're not interested in anything else on our agenda, are you? So you wanna go ahead and?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second. Good job.
Gotta do something.
All right. All right, thank you.
Unit one side.
Okay. All right, so, uh, thank you.
Good night.
Mr. Moderator, always a pleasure. We'll see you soon. Uh, so the consent agenda is next. Um, so this evening, we have a one-day liquor license, uh, for the university, top of the campus spring football game at McGurk Stadium, April nineteenth, from ten to one thirty. Uh, ten AM to one thirty PM. Use of the Town Commons, Summer Nights on the Common, um, sponsored by Valley Malt, uh, June twentieth from five PM to nine PM. A one-day liquor license for Oktoberfest Annual Event to be held at the Young Men's Club on October twenty-fifth, eleven to seven, eleven AM to seven PM. Uh, Annual Report and Oakley Award dedications, um, to, uh, in this order, to, no, yep. Uh, Peg Toadrun for the Annual Report and John Allen for the dedication for, uh, the Fred Oakley Award. A parade permit, um, permission to file a parade permit for the Memorial Day Parade to be held on May twenty-fifth. And signatory permission for the tie-in bond wastewater system asset management inventory and planning, um, granting Michael Mason as interim town administrator, and a shredding event to be held on May seventeenth at the Senior Center.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Jane, seconded by Randy, all those in favor? I?
Oh, roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call vote, right.
Roll call that Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, great. Um, public comment. Um, is there anybody here this evening for public comment? Appears to be none. Um, old business five point one, uh, Mike, it looks like you're looking for us to pick a date for the water and sue a public hearing?
Yeah, um, Susan, I don't know if you, if you're still on there, if you wanna jump in and just give us the drop dead date again. I know it's in June, but I can't remember the number, June twentieth or something like that.
There somewhere.
She is.
Are you unmuting her?
I'm, I'm trying to unmute her.
Yeah. Said Jim?
Yeah, I believe she gave me a date of June twentieth in order for it to hit, um, the first quarter. Yeah, you know, based upon any changes you'd like to make to it. Uh, essentially, it's just the, it's the public hearing and where you would select the, you know, the rates to actually change.
So assuming our.
Do it, you could do it, I think, I don't know if it's done before, but I think you could do it on a regular, um, select board meeting.
Which could be the fourth and the eighteenth. It's the first and the third.
Of June?
Of June.
I would imagine you could pick either one of those and get it out. Yeah, either one, fourth's fine with me.
Yeah, why don't we try it on the fourth so that we're not cutting it too close?
Okay.
Okay.
She just unmuted.
So we're doing it on June fourth, if that's okay with you.
That works.
All right. Um, land acquisition policy. So this is the, um, we are, um, final reading, um, for voting on the land acquisition policy that has been presented to us in the past. Any questions, comments, concerns?
No, I think that Mike fixed it after our first conversations and my move that we.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Jane, seconded by David. All those in favor? A roll call vote?
Roll call that Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith. Yes, and Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, new business item six point one. Um, Lauren, are you presenting, uh, say, employee appointments, resignations, and job description updates?
Um, so we have, I'm here to appoint Ted Casey, um, from the foreman position to an equipment operator. Um, he's currently in the foreman position. Um, and is looking to move into the equipment operator position, something he, uh, feels he would be better at. We support him in that. Um, so I asked you to move forward with, uh, appointing him to equipment operator.
Do I'm always at once or one at a time?
Um, we can do it all at once. And then, um, we also have a title change of the DPW. Um, from chief water operator to primary treatment operator and plant manager. And then we have resignation, um, of Perry Santiago effective April twenty-fourth. And we'd like to appoint Tommy Glendlin as the interim building commissioner while we search for someone in the meantime.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Motion. Motion made by Jane, seconded by Randy, Jennifer Rollcall vote.
Roll call that Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to take a moment to thank, um, Officer Santiago, um, for all of the his years of service to the town of Haddon. Um, item six point two, uh, the Collins Center Succession Planning Final Report. I believe we're going to pass over this this evening and, and, uh, address this at a future meeting.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, and, uh, next we have the town administrator report.
Okay, um, in the interest of time, I will only hit the highlights here and change it. Some of these things you actually took up tonight, so I'll skip over a lot of them. Um, you just dealt with the classification. Um, I wrote that she's gonna be at it tonight. Obviously, we're gonna change that with a future meeting. The fiber update, Jennifer did send out a doodle poll for that. We're trying to get a lot of people on the same page. It's, it's been a little bit difficult. We're on our second doodle poll here, but we are working on it. Um, Russell School reuse, we have met with, um, both, uh, companies who have been working on it, and Jake will be here, uh, at the May seventh meeting to present his final report. Um, as far as the levy rehab stuff, which, that's been a work in progress, we've been continuing to work towards a, a solution. I've given Senator Collins for updates and we are trying to arrange a meeting with, uh, Woodard and Colin to go over some final numbers. Uh, TA search, uh, first round of interviews have been complete. Um, the committee has selected four candidates to move into the next phase. Uh, right now, the process, uh, background check process and reference check begins. This will likely take two to three weeks. Probably as soon as they are done, they'll let us know and we will move on to the next phase, which would essentially be, um, select board interviews.
Mike, can I, can I just pause there for a second?
Yeah.
Um, I thought that you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought when we originally, um, set this up, we were hoping to only two, maybe three, if they were really close candidates would be coming to the board. Um, four, four seems just like a lot. So, and I, and I know we want to be careful, because, um, but do we need to have more conversation about this? Because?
I mean, um, I, I think in order to follow protocol properly, what would need to happen is, is the board would have to probably have some type of a discussion and send it back to the committee to, uh, whittle it down if you wanted to whittle it down further.
Yeah.
Uh, I am guessing that the candidates have been notified that, you know, they made it through the background checks, I'm not sure. Uh, but we can, uh, certainly do that if, uh, the board would like. We can put this on for just a simple, we have, we have the, uh, public hearing coming up very soon.
Twenty-third.
Or on the twenty-third, you can add that as an agenda.
Plan agenda.
Would you guys mind?
Discussion will be on it.
On the twenty-third, you won't. Okay. Um, David, Amy, or Jane, would you mind just having a brief discussion about this before we spend time interviewing?
Four people, yes.
No, I think that's a great idea because it's gonna be a long process with four people.
Yeah.
I don't, I can say anything as someone who inter.
I think that has to wait till we're on the agenda.
Yeah, that's why if we, uh, if you're okay, if we just put it on a quick agenda, Amy, for next, next week. And then we can just talk about it more fully and then decide. Is that okay?
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Um, one thing I would like to do with everyone here is to get you to pencil in, please, if possible. May nineteenth or potential interviews, we'll figure out exactly how many people it will be at the, uh, next week, but, uh, just take a look at your calendars. I'm going to be, um, we, we will discuss this more at the, at, at next week's meeting, uh, and I'll work with the chair on any, any other details that need to be worked on, but, um, I would love to try to set this up for the nineteenth, completely separate from any other select board meeting.
Is there any alternative to the nineteenth or is that really?
There, there are. There's two, two other dates.
Seven and twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Any of those is fine with me.
Yeah, the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth work, the nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
I haven't got a conflict.
I've got a serious conflict, um, twenty-seven or twenty-eight, either, um. Well, twenty-seven is better for me. I have to drive Diane to a doctor in Springfield.
Wednesday. Which one's better?
Twenty-seven is better.
All right.
David, how about you and Amy?
Oh, that should be okay. I can probably make it work.
The twenty-seven? Yeah. I work from home, but.
We'll be all out from marching, so.
Just pencil that in and I'll be in touch with the chair and we will talk more. We'll put it on for an agenda and we'll talk more next week. Um, that's it. That's all I have. Um, yeah, that's, that's all I have for significant changes.
That's a lot.
Okay. Um, yes.
Um, in, in the, in the index discussion, the key part is part of the town meeting reviewed, we did not divide the motions, we did not division motions, and then we do need that, or there's maximum same.
I noticed that. So, um, do we, what I was going to ask, I think we did this once before. Um, do you want to just take a first pass at it, circulate it, and we can, knowing that, um, Randy will not be present at town meeting?
So don't put me on anything.
Are you, are you okay with that?
Go ahead, give it all to me. That means he does them off. That's right. I'll do them all.
Not just doing the division of motions by email.
I'll, I'll send it out to email. If anybody's passionate about one, if you want to email me that. If you really want to speak to it, let me know that as well and we can go from there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so liaison reports and, uh, announcements, does anybody have either?
I have no, no liaison report.
Okay, I only had one, um, for announcements. I was, was thinking we were going to announce the DPW open house. But given the conversation this evening, should we?
We should wait.
We should wait and not plan on the open house.
Yeah.
Happening on April twenty-sixth.
David, is, how's Bran, is Brandy going to be okay with that? I know she's trying to head this thing up and she's going to be all right this week? She has to wait another week? Yep, uh, any donations haven't been received yet, so, uh, just commitments to them. So I don't think it's an issue to push them off until a future date. Excellent.
Anything else?
Did, there's a obituary, Clayton, did you see that?
No, which?
Clayton, late.
Oh, can I do that next week?
Sure.
Okay. Um, all right. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, oh, yes.
Second.
All right, Amy. Motion made by Randy, seconded by Amy. Jennifer roll call vote.
Yes, for the final time to, uh, Phil.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.